2017, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which we stand in, one nation, one God, indivisible, and infinite in justice and rule.
Mrs. Mello?
Counsel Perry.
Present.
Counsel LaBeau.
Here.
Counsel Ryan.
Present.
Counsel Hilton.
Present.
Counsel Shabbitt.
Present.
Counsel Edwards.
Present.
Counsel DiMederos is absent.
Thank you. Mrs. Mello? First item on the agenda is a presentation of legislative grants for the Police Department, Fire Department, and Senior Center by Honorable Representatives Jay Edwards and Dennis Canario and the Honorable Senator Walter S. Vilek Jr. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Madam President. Unfortunately, Chief Lakey isn't here to receive his check, so I think we'll have to take it back with us.[63.02][63.02](Laughter). We actually have three checks this evening. We have one for the Fire Department, we have one for the Police Department, and we have one for the Senior Center. And there is a caveat for the one with the Fire Department, because I understand they're going to buy a new ATV for their workout in the woods, and that the caveat is that the chief has to let us all have a ride on it first.[87.36][87.36](Laughter). So, Chief, this will go a long way towards you getting that ATV, a check for $10,000.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.[103.11][103.11](Applause).
And since Chief...
I could take the chief's if he's not going to use it.
Well, we could have a change, Chief.[110.11][110.11](Laughter). Just one chief to the other chief. Madam President?
This one's for the Senior Center for $3,000.[127.11][127.11](Applause).
And this one, well, we will give it to you, even though the chief isn't here to accept it. I understand this is going to be used for communications equipment for the Police Department, and Senator Vilek, Representative Canario, and I got a check for $10,000 to that end, so you're going to have a lot of new communications equipment coming to the town.
Very good. Thank you.[173.12][173.12](Applause).
And just to expound on that a little bit, previously, we had awarded grants to the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Senior Centers, the Tiverton Library, and also the Tiverton Little League, each recipients of various denominations of grants, so thank you.
Thank you very much. It'll be put to good use for the Town of Tiverton. Consent agenda, business brought before the council. CA 1A, approval of regular session meeting minutes of June 12, 2017. 1B, approval of executive session meeting minutes of June 21, 2017. 1C, approval of executive session meeting minutes of June 26, 2017. 1D, approval of special meeting minutes April 26, 2017. 1E, approval of special meeting open session minutes April 5, 2017. 1F, approval of special meeting executive session minutes April 5, 2017. CA 2, receipt of minutes from the filing boards and commissions, none. CA 3, correspondence received and filed, 3A. Cranston City Council resolution in support of H. 6204 relating to maintenance of town roads. CA 4, approval of tax assessor abatements. CA 5, town administrator, June monthly department reports. CA 6, town administrator, June police and fire overtime reports. CA 7, town administrator requests scheduling of public hearing for amendments to fee resolution on July 26, council meeting. Are there any items that the councilors wish to remove from the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to remove CA 6.
CA 6, any others? Do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda minus CA 6.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous. Ms. Hilton?
I have a question. Chief Lakey's not here, but I have a question for the town administrator, and I understand there may not be an answer this evening, which is okay. The May through June Police Department overtime is 22,000, which is pretty steep, although I do understand we're now in vacation season when people are taking their vacation in the nice weather. But there is one item in here for grants totaling 6,700, and I'm just not quite sure what that overtime item is.
Neither am I, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you. That's all, Madam President, I have.
Do I have a motion for CA 6?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Make a motion to approve CA 6.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Barbara Pelletier.
Thanks to Sue Anderson, we had a lovely, lovely Fourth of July celebration in Tiverton. It was very meaningful and very, very thoughtful, and I think that anyone who missed it should keep it in their minds for next year, because we learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, and I'd also like to thank you for the muffins and the coffee. That was excellent. B, public hearings and presentations. B1, Twin River Tiverton LLC Roundabout Presentation. Mr. Russo?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I think if you recall, when we put together the contracts between DOT and the town, and then the town and Twin River to try to expedite the design and the construction of the roundabout in conjunction with the casino, there were members of the planning board and members of the council who had suggested that once we get to 90 percent design, it would probably be wise to have a public presentation. So, we have Todd Brayton with us from Bryan Associates, who under contract is finishing the design that would otherwise be done by Rideout staff. Before Todd goes in his presentation, just to bring everyone up to speed, Todd has submitted 90 percent design to DOT. They've done one round of comments, right, Todd? And I think there's a second round of comments that will go back, hopefully sometime this week, so it's timely to put this presentation on at this point. By way of timeline, we've been able to shorten design, bidding, all of those types of things that are normally very regimented and step-by-step in the DOT that could take upwards to 18 months. We've been able to compress that, which was the hope. The Solicitor's Office has been coordinating on behalf of the town under the contract, and that's been very seamless. We appreciate the time. At this point, we have DEM approval that remains, just specific to the roundabout, which I would anticipate sometime this month. We're finishing our archaeological survey of the state right-of-way, which is separate from the project site, and Todd's office is working with the various utilities to coordinate the utility pole relocations and that type of thing. And we hope that we're on schedule for a start date of construction sometime in the month of August. We don't quite know when. You might know a little bit better in the next, maybe 10 days, I would guess, but hopefully sometime that month. So with that, I'll let Todd do the presentation. The only other thing I wanted to add is that, and I don't think he's here tonight, but Mr. Anderson on behalf of DPW and Mr. Baker on behalf of steer engineering have been working with us, and they're going to get us, I think tomorrow or very soon after that, comments on a traffic protection plan, sequencing of construction. So you'll hear Todd go through that tonight as to how it'll be sequenced and minimize impact on traffic and so forth, or how we can still manage traffic, but we have yet to incorporate the comments from Mr. Anderson and Mr. Baker to that. So that will get further refined, and obviously, the Police Department will have to review that as well. So go ahead, Todd.
Okay. Can everyone see the plans? I'm sure everyone won't be able to, but hopefully, they're in pretty good location there. So what we have here, the roundabout is at the intersection of William S. Canning Boulevard, which is Route 81, Stafford Road, which is Route 81 to the south. Stafford also goes off to the north, and Hurst Lane. Currently, it's a stop control condition coming from Stafford Road into Route 81, a little bit to the north of Hurst Lane. So the roundabout is actually going to be shifted a little bit to the south.
Mr. Brayton, you'll have to speak up. They're having difficulty hearing you.
All right. Can you hear me now?
(inaudible).
If the people in the back could just, like, come forward more, so you can hear. Go ahead, proceed.
This plan shows a little closer detail of the roundabout. There are five approaches to the roundabout. As I said, there's William S. Canning Boulevard coming from the north, two approaches of Stafford Road, Hurst Lane, which is at the top of the page, and then now the new approach for the casino. The one significant change from, as Mr. Russo mentioned, from when Rideout had the project earlier before it got moved forward, is there's a, now there's a second lane on the William S. Canning Boulevard, southbound approach, which will allow traffic coming to go directly into the casino, and I'll, that might be... You may be able to see it a little better on this plan, how it's striped out for two separate lanes on that approach. Kind of some of the details of the design, there's going to be sidewalks on all sides on all the approaches to the roundabout. There's a, what we call a concrete truck apron in the middle, which will allow for the trucks to navigate the roundabout. Primarily, the cars will be, it's a little hard to see in this plan, but the cars will go on the outside, but when trucks have to go through it, they actually will use that inner apron that is closer to the island in the center. One thing that we are working on, as Attorney Russo mentioned, with DOT is coming up with some different guide signs or destination signage for the roundabout, which are not reflected in this plan. We're actually working on that, so when we make the next admission to Rideout, that'll be incorporated. It's probably going to be larger signs that will actually give the directions of where each approach goes to, so for people that are unfamiliar with the area and roundabouts in general, because there still are not that many of them in Rhode Island, hopefully we'll give a little better guidance so that people know where they're going, and they'll be able to get through the roundabout when they get there. As Mr. Russo mentioned, there is utility coordination that's currently ongoing. There's going to be, I believe it's eight utility poles that have to be relocated for the work. There's also going to be some, as part of the casino, there's water connections. There's a new sewer line that's being installed around the roundabout, down Hurst Lane to Leeway. Hurst Lane and Leeway will be repaved as part of that work after the sewer's installed. We're also putting in all-new drainage system, which actually is an improvement over existing conditions. We're putting in a sand filter with some storm scepter drainage structures, which actually will treat the water better than it is now, and that's part of the design. This plan shows the landscaping that's designed. The landscape architect, which is a very waterman for the roundabout, worked with Hallie Beckman's office, who's the landscape architect for the site, to kind of coordinate what the landscaping would look like, so it would be kind of in sync with each other. So the splitter islands, which are the islands on each approach, will be landscaped. The center island will have a small wall with landscaping on top. There's also going to be some landscaping provided on the top of the page over near Hurst Lane, because of the configuration of the roundabout, that actually just opens up some space up there for allowing landscaping to be put in. In terms of the construction, while it's actually being done, we're looking at four phases. The first phase is primarily going to be the work that's to the west of the interest of the existing intersection or the existing roadway. It'll be all off-road, so there'll be minimal impacts to traffic during this phase. It might be a little bit, maybe doing some of the work that's associated with the edges of the area, but for the most part, it'll be minimal impacts to traffic driving through In the second phase, we're looking at doing work on the east side of the intersection, so the configurations are going to change. You're not going to have just lanes coming in and out from Stafford Road to the north instead of having, the way it now goes around the islands, it'll just be kind of like one intersection. And the traffic on Route 81 will continue similar to what it is. Again, there will be probably some lane closures here and there for some of the work associated with what's going on in this phase.
Can I just ask a question while you're on that?
Yep.
What about Hurst Lane? Hurst Lane will...
Yes, so Hurst Lane...
...not be able to take a right.
There'll probably be times, it will depend on what the contractor decides and how they actually specifically sequence it, but there may be times where it might be one lane, so maybe they'll have, might have a police detail that might direct the traffic. Or potentially, there's always, could be a detour for the people that actually go around till they can cock and come back around. Again, it probably depends on when they're actually, what work they're doing. If they're doing some curb work or sidewalk work, they might need a little more space, so then they might have to allow that, but for a lot of the other work, there won't be any impacts to Hurst Lane. It's not going to be a permanent or a consistent or constant impact to Hurst Lane during this This is Phase 3, so the majority of work in Phase 3 is actually kind of in the middle of the intersection. The traffic coming northbound will kind of, it'll almost start operating as a roundabout, or less than 10 at least, so they start going around what will be the roundabout, and then kind of going to the west side for people going southbound. And this will, for the most part, will kind of complete the roundabout construction itself. And then in Phase 4... In Phase 4, it'll be kind of some cleanup work. The sand filter will be installed, the temporary basin that's on the west side of the intersection will be taken out, and that'll be revegetated, and then some of the work on the, kind of the southeast portion of the intersection will be completed over near Hurst Lane to the south. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. If anyone has any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I have a question. Can you go back to the discussion about the trucks? So, are what you're saying is that if you're coming south on William Canning Boulevard and you're a truck, turning into the casino, you're not going to use the right-hand lane, you're going to use the left-hand lane to take that turn?
No, actually, that maneuver, they would actually be able to stay in their lane completely taking that turn.
Okay, so explain to me about the trucks.
Okay.
Please.
Yes, all right, so there's, because it's a roundabout, there's obviously, you'd be able to circumnavigate, so looking, if you were coming southbound, we'll take that approach first. If you're taking a right, you would just be in that right lane going into Casino.
Yeah.
If you're going in any of the other approaches or in the other exits, you'd be in the left lane. You would stay in the main circulatory roadway to go either Stafford Road South, come around to go to Hurst Lane, further around to come to Stafford Road Northbound, or if there's any reason for a truck to do a complete 360, they could also do that.
Right.
So that portion in the middle, that's outside of the center, allows that movement, so the trucks would actually encroach on top of that truck apron, which is actually raised from the rest of the roadway.
Okay, so that's what I maybe thought you were saying. So this, what looks like sort of, on this version, a brick pattern, this is a truck apron?
Right.
And when you say it's raised, how much is it raised?
I could look at the details to get specifically the answer, but I believe it's three inches.
Okay, so what stops, then, someone who's following a truck, right? You know, who may or may not be familiar with the roundabout, from following a truck onto the truck apron, thinking that that's another lane?
I think it would, because of that differential in the height with that three-inch, or what I can look it up to get specifically what that is, that actually is a deterrent from most cars driving up there, and it actually wouldn't be comfortable for them to do that. A truck obviously needs to do that because the size of the vehicle, they actually need to go up there to make the maneuver, but for cars, it typically is not, it wouldn't be a comfortable maneuver to try to drive up onto the truck apron.
I don't know. I grew up on the Cape, the land of not roundabouts but rotaries.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm telling you that, you know, I mean, I would love someone who's a, I don't know, maybe Bill Anderson, our DPW director, has an opinion, but I just don't know how, because that's not a usual, this apron's not a usual design feature.
Most roundabouts do have truck aprons, actually.
They do?
Yes.
And does it have curbing?
Not, all of them don't have curbing. That's kind of a relatively newer feature of, and I think it's because of maybe what some of the things you're saying, to kind of keep people in, or drivers in the lane they're supposed to be in, so that, again, it's more of a deterrent to do that, to keep them off the truck apron.
Does, may I ask our DPW director if he has a thought on that? I would just worry that you'd see, that people would see a truck going in and going there and perceive that to be a lane, then, believe me, I've seen people do weird things at rotaries, and that, you know, it seems kind of complicated.
Hello? This is similar to the roundabout that we're, that they just put in in Warwick and the whole, they just redid 117, Route 1, and everything else. That pattern there is there for trucks to go up onto, and when you're going into the rotary, you see it, and you don't generally want to go onto that. You just, for some reason, when I drive into it, I see it, and I don't want to drive onto that. I want to stay on that pavement and go right around the rotary. I understand why it's there for, because you need to get the trucks around it. Otherwise, I mean, otherwise, they would need more land to put two-way of traffic, two lanes, actual physical lanes, in there, and that's an alternative that DOT's been using right now.
I have a question.
Ms. Ryan?
Whoever answers, I don't care. What kind of trucks are you talking about? It's like every truck, you're not talking about anything specific for the casino, you're talking about any kind of trucks that's going anywhere in that, small ones, short, you know?
All trucks, yes.
Right? Except, well, but except the, what's the name of that other street? Atlantic, is it Atlantic?
Hurst. Hurst Lane.
No, no, the one that's further, where the trucks go now.
Aquidnic.
Aquidnic, yeah. So that lane is still, that street is still going to be for most of the casino trucks, right?
So the...
For construction, yeah. That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
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 Okay, so this is not for the constructions?
No.
Although they might, they might use it.
I don't know. I don't know if you know the details of that.
I don't think so. I don't think they would use it during construction. Let's see, is Joanna back there? Joanna, is the plan, the plan is to use the Aquidnic Avenue or Aquidnic entrance for construction, right? We're not going to use in the roundabout entrance.
We'll be using Aquidnic, and then eventually we'll be coming in where the right-hand turn lane will be.
Okay, once it's constructed, okay.
So to repeat the answer, it's still use Aquidnic Road?
Until the rotary right-hand lane is constructed.
Until the rotary is completed, and then use both Aquidnic and the right-hand lane?
Right.
Going entrance into the Twin Rivers.
Correct.
So is the truck apron, when a truck goes up on the truck apron, I'm assuming that the inside wheels are on the apron, but the outside wheels aren't on the apron, is that correct?
Yes.
And does that leave enough room on the outside for someone who's not roundabout or rotary smart to think that they can be in a second lane outside the truck?
No, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be enough room, the truck's not going to be completely hugged up against the inside of the island, they're going to be kind of, like you said, one wheel up, so they're going to be kind of in the truck apron and in the travel lane, so there wouldn't be enough room for a car to get around there.
So no one would be confused into thinking that they had a lane that they could pass, go around the truck on the outside?
Right.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's sort of my question, is that, I mean, is this safe?
It is, yeah. There are, in Rhode Island, there are more and more of the Apennog projects that Bill mentioned. There's five roundabouts going in there. I think there's four in place already, and one more coming, and there's, in other parts of the country, there are lots of roundabouts. There's, I didn't get into it tonight, but there's a lot of research that's been done, that roundabouts are actually much safer than traditional intersections.
Right, but I mean, but are there lots of them built with these truck aprons?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Question for Director Anderson. Since you live over in that Apennog, well, you live in East Greenwich, you're closer to Apennog than most of us, is there any chance you'd be able to take a couple of snapshots of what this looks like installed, and maybe we can get those on the town website?
Sure, not a problem.
I think that might help alleviate some people's concerns.
It is interesting when you first go into it, but once you get that, once you do it a couple of times, people will see in the signage, as long as there's signage, people will know where to go, because you're slowing down as you're coming into it anyway, it's not straight through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one point to that question is that actually, most of the roundabouts in Apennog are actually multi-lane roundabouts, so they have two lanes, which are typically a little more tricky to navigate than this is, which is mostly just a one-lane roundabout. And I think the actual, only pure one-lane roundabout in Apennog is the one that's not constructed yet, but it'll at least give an idea of what they look like.
So you mentioned that the DOT has reviewed this, and it's gone through one round of comments?
Yes.
So there's going to be a second round of review?
Yes, we're going to be submitting hopefully this week with, based on the comments that we have, the comments that we're getting from Bill, and that'll kind of get that to them, and at that point, we should be, should be ready to go, unless they have any additional comments.
Okay, and I missed this, the DEM approval for this is pending?
Pending, yes. It was submitted on June 23, so we would think we might see it this month, but I'm not exactly sure.
Now, this doesn't impact basically anybody's, butters, the, on either side of Hurst Lane, you're actually, you have more property?
Right, the only, and Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the only land that needs to be taken is land from Twin Rivers site.
Okay. Is there any impact up at the Stafford Road North? There are some entranceways or entrances into a business there that have, has gravel, and is there any major impact to that business?
No, no, no major impact.
Because I couldn't see on this diagram if that had any impact. In the first iteration of this, there were impacts to that, and the first iteration was Hurst Lane was still going to be a left-hand turn, so this is...
Oh, before they moved it back.
They moved it south.
Right.
So it is a good, good design, moving it south, so Hurst Lane is now an actual entrance into the roundabout.
Right.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? If you could come up to the podium. State your name and address.
George Walsh, I'm on the subcommittee with the casino. Once all the DOT and everything is cleared, what do you anticipate for a timeframe from the beginning to the end, if everything is on schedule, no delays? Timeframe to complete the rotary, we're talking months or a year? Will the casino be open before that time?
No, no, we, the casino cannot open until the roundabout is functional.
That's what we want to find out.
But the timeline that they've mapped out shows it, that it can be accomplished in times for the, for a July opening, or July 2018 opening.
Yeah, a year from now, okay, that's the timeframe, about a year.
That's what we're, we're working towards.
Okay, good, thank you.
Hi, my name's Natalie Bergeron, 138 Abel Heart Lane. Just something for the council here to keep in mind. According to the Providence Journal, on May 26, in the first four months of 2017, the police reported 42 collisions at the Apennog, if I'm massacring the pronunciation there, I apologize, 42 collisions at that roundabout. The same time in 2013, which is immediately prior to when construction of that roundabout began, there were 20 crashes, so we have more than doubled the amount of traffic incidents with this amazingly constructed, architected roundabout than we would, than, you know...
Thank you. Thank you.
Joe, Susan, 49 Hancock Street, a few questions. First up, you didn't give a date for construction and a date for completion. When do you estimate to start the project? When do you estimate it'll be completed? And will there be something in the contract that guarantees that it doesn't drag on? Because we have a lot of times seeing in the state, they start the job and then the crews disappear for a few weeks, go work somewhere else. So it should be a start to finish, short date, maybe 45 days. Shouldn't take anymore to build a small little rotary like that, considering you're not taking any buildings or anything. I do realize moving telephone poles, I know what happened to Mr. LeBeau, you have to schedule that. With the power company, sometimes, you know, they're working on a storm or something that happened up north or whatever, it's tough to get crews. But the, the completion date should be no more than 45 days beyond the start. Second thing, I haven't seen it up here much, but I know in Virginia, whenever they did construction, they always put a little road around the side. For instance, where you're coming out of Stafford to come on to Canning Boulevard, you got that section of field with the parking lot, I can assume a lot of people are going to try to cut through the parking lot in front of that little store, coming from Stafford, like if you're coming from Far River.
Yep.
If you could have a little, you know, I don't know if it's possible, but I think there's enough room around, maybe that you can get, even if it's gravel, just to keep the traffic moving, so you don't have the backups, because that intersection during, you know, rush hour can back up, clear down at Harbor Mall if, just a small accident, I've seen it, living over there. I looked at the rotary, it just looks kind of small for the area. I don't know, I guess I'm used to the, I call it a rotary because I guess I'm used to rotaries, they seem to be a lot bigger. It's, I don't know, that, for the volume of the traffic, I'm just, I'm assuming that studies show that that circumference is adequate for the traffic, but it, just me looking at it, it looks kind of small. I don't know, that's just my personal opinion.
On the, on the construction schedule itself, we hope to start in August. And the folks from Gilbane can correct me if I'm wrong, but you saw Todd do the four phases?
Yeah.
I think the first three phases get done this construction season and then the fourth phase gets finished in the spring. And as far as keeping people on that schedule, we have, everybody has a great deal of incentive to keep them on, so there's, that, that's built into the contract. The question that you had about the roundabout and the studies and the size, I'm going to turn over to Todd, because I don't know the, I mean, I, he knows the answer better than I do.
Yes, so the, the size of the roundabout is, is typical for roundabout design, especially for a one-lane roundabout. It, it will accommodate vehicles, like I, like I mentioned earlier, vehicle traffic, car traffic around in the, the travel lane and then also truck traffic to go around with the truck apron when needed.
Just, just the bulk of the traffic is on Stafford and Canning, so that's the bulk of the traffic. Just notice that the alignment's, it's almost straight. Makes me wonder if people coming in and around are going to have a problem merging. And that's where I said the size, I wonder if it should have been larger, so that when you're coming up off Canning, you don't see a straight shot, you actually have to get into the, because that's how rotaries, if you notice how rotaries were designed. I think of the one up in the north end of Far River, if you're familiar with that one. And that, no matter when you go into it, not much traffic, you're able to make that merge in easily, providently. You know, you gotta have a little, you know, I'm going to go, but when I see the straight line, that's what kind of makes me wonder. I mean, it's on paper, I realize, maybe when it's actual size, it'll be, but it just seems like it should be more of a, you know, slope out.
Thanks, Joe. Pam?
Val Russo, Hurst, well, Song Brook Lane. We were wondering about, well, naturally, I'm sure you thought of fire engines that are coming from wherever, but then getting off on, on Hurst quickly. Can they, which one is Hurst here, which?
Right up here.
All right, so will they be able to get on and get off and cut in front of the traffic to their right?
Yes, when, when the roundabout is constructed?
Yes.
Yeah, so typically cars would not stop in the roundabout when fire trucks are coming. Although the design vehicle used for the roundabout is actually much larger than, than the fire trucks. So most of the fire trucks, I know that Chief Estelar, they, they use on, probably a point in a while, they have a large ladder truck from Fort Smith that comes in, uh, mutual aid, but even still that smaller than the larger design vehicles, the big, long tractor trailers that are designed for.
Are you, are you aware that where we live at Hurst Lane, they plan on opening another section and bringing in more of those houses on trailers, which are very large? And that's our only, their only access? So I don't know how that would handle.
I'd have to look at that to see specifically, sometimes for, for something like that, they can, they can do something different. If they try to get police details and maybe-
Right.
Depending on how big it is.
They'd be wrong, they just might have to arrange traffic control.
To accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Jeffrey Belli, Burt Street. I just have one question for Ride Out. This roundabout is supposed to take care of the traffic problems on this road, correct?
It was implemented actually at the request of the town because of the issues of safety at the current intersection.
Okay, how is this roundabout going to succeed with the one in Newport that's totally failed?
The, the roundabout failed?
Yes. In the, early in the morning, cars going into the naval base will back up all the way down Connell Highway. And it's not only because of the naval base. If you go to try to get, like you're coming out of the naval base, they back all the way back up into the naval base, because people stop at the beginning of the roundabout and they do not move. It's like another intersection all over again. And when the construction was going on in the Newport, on the Pell Bridge, we had traffic backed up all the way up, back up Connell Highway, you know, past Walmart, and it was all stopped in the roundabout. People could not, once the traffic backs up in the roundabout, there is no other lane for people to move. The same thing can happen here. If one person backs up or something happens, because somebody don't know where to go, it's going to back everybody else up, up the, up the, every street. The roundabouts do not work. There was a perfect rotary in Newport, they changed it to a roundabout, and now it doesn't work. It clogs up traffic in Newport for hours. This, it looks like this design is going to do the exact same thing. The roundabouts, in my opinion, do not work and they're going to be putting two more of them in, in Middletown, and we're going to see how, how bad those work as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belli.
Roger Belange, 125 Stafford Road, Tiverton. What is going to be the speed limit change approaching this new design? Has any thought been given to that?
Not that I'm aware of, but the design speeds for the roundabout are-
Could, could you actually answer it at the mic? So that people can hear this?
So, so as far as I know, there hasn't been any specific changes to the, to the speed limit entering the intersection, the roundabout? But you, you will have to slow down just based on the geometry of the intersection to maybe somewhere in the range of 15 to 20 miles per hour to actually circumnavigate the, the roundabout.
And you fully, you fully expect people are going to do that on their own, without any postings? They're going to slow down to 20? Brilliant, okay. The other question I had is what kind of blasting and, and chunking away of ledge and such is going to be, have to be required as part of this, this construction?
Unlike the, the site, the casino site, there actually is no anticipated blasting at, at the roundabout. There is, I think, some ledge further away from, from the intersection. But as far as we know, based on, on the information that we have, there, there should be no blasting at the, at the roundabout. And actually, for the most part, we're actually going to be filling in some of the areas to actually bring it up to, to grade.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused on this ledge that's required for the trucks. I, I don't understand what the purpose of it is. It may have a valid purpose, I don't understand what it is. Can you describe why it's required? I, I fully expect that half the people that are going to be driving, leaving the casino are going to be on two wheels anyways, when they come flying out of there after drinking all night. So we'll have to deal with that kind of crap. But I want to know why the trucks are going to need this other ledge, what that's about. That's all.
Can, is, is, can I go over there? I don't know if I can take the microphone or not, but I'll try to maybe speak up.
So when trucks are, are traveling around, around the intersection, they, because of their size, there's just not enough space for them to stay within the travel lane. So they have to, so for instance, this maneuver, they're going, they're this way. They're going to, they're going to be coming around here and then the back of the vehicle will actually encroach on this apron. So as the front of the vehicle is over here, the back is going to be on the apron to get around. It's just because of the size of the truck. If you've seen them turning in any, any intersections, they, they have a much bigger path than a car does. Right, so that, that's what that's for, is just for them to be able to make those turns.
It's called a tractor-trailer truck.
Tractor-trailer trucks. Probably smaller, like maybe FedEx truck, probably wouldn't, is this larger trucks?
So it, it, it's the sheer size, we can't go bigger with the, with this rotary, whatever you want to call it, to, to allow the trucks, enough room to spate, to drive around?
Right, you actually, you wouldn't want to do that, because when, I think someone asked earlier, if you have all this space for travel lane, then you might have cars needing as more than one lane and they might actually try to pass in the, in the roundabout. And for this roundabout, especially a one-lane roundabout, you don't want that to occur. You actually want to, you want to keep it as one lane, you don't want people trying to pass in, in the roundabout.
Thank you.
Lauren King, 233 Norman Street, Fall River. I have two questions. One, what about once the casino is open, what about deliveries? Where will the delivery trucks, is this the entrance for deliveries?
This is, yes, it's, this is the primary entrance for the, for the casino. There is, off the page, to the south, there's an emergency access only, which is going to be gated. That's only going to be for, for fire and police access when they need it. Otherwise, every, all the traffic is coming through this intersection.
How are we to find out what your estimates are on traffic? Like how often a delivery is going to be made? What is the, the, the traffic? Have you done, I'm sure you've done studies of what kind of traffic you're expecting. We also have a new development in Fall River, down the street. Have you assessed the traffic estimates there?
Yeah, we, we did do a full traffic study.
Once it was announced about that new mall development, the shopping center?
We, we have gone back and looked at some of the, the traffic for that and there is excess capacity in the area to account for additional traffic.
Where can we find these, this information?
It's all filed with the planning board, it's all public record.
It's all on file with the planning board?
Yep.
So there won't be any additional studies though done to see, like, once that, that shopping center is open, because that's opening in the fall before the casino, if that's going to impact them? That, that's going to add quite a bit of traffic, it's a concern. There won't be any additional studies after that? My last question is, there won't be any traffic lights at all?
No, it's, it's, a roundabout actually is, is an alternative to a, a signalized traffic intersection. So there's actually no, there's no signalization of any kind.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. DeMones?
Peter Monis, 83, Captain Circle. I have a couple of questions and the first one is basically about signs, which previously it was mentioned about the speed sign going into that rotary. I, I believe the speed limit's now posted about 45 and we travel 45 down that road and we get to learn how to go slower. So I would suggest that when you go to the DOT for your review, that they study this area and do a new posting, you know, that's appropriate for that entrance into that rotary. So maybe a 20-speed limit, 100 feet away from this entrance to these, to the various entrances to the rotary. So please do that when you meet, meet with them again. Sidewalks look pretty good for safety. My concern is about bicyclists traveling the roadway. Maybe there should be a sign to share the road awareness down in this area for bicyclists to be, you know, prevent an accident occurring there. And of course, the bicyclist has to follow the same rules as the vehicle. The next thing is the right-hand turn into the casino coming from the north. I think you should post a sign there to say, right-hand turn casino, you know, some type of sign that says that it's available and do it, don't do it at the last minute. And landscaping on, into the center of the circle, to me, I think that's going to be a problem. Planting plants is fine, it's a very small rotary radius. In the wintertime, there's going to be a lot of sulk on those plants, it's going to be, they're going to kill them. And then watering of those plants. So I would suggest maybe some little fancy concrete structure to jazz up the area, but not plants in the, in the, in the circle. And then we know the state of Rhode Island is not going to maintain those plants and cut, hopefully they cut the grass. So, so keep it down, low maintenance is the, the better way to go there. And too, I talked to you before, that when you go to the DOT, they should come back again and give us some public relations, how to work into a rotary, it's going to be a change in the way we operate on that highway. Serving on the planning board in my research, Stafford Road, in this area here is the highest traffic count in the town of Tiverton. It's right now 15,000 cars per day. With the casino, as you told me, and told us, there's going to be another 3,000. So that's a 20% increase in traffic right in that area there. We should expect a queuing going north, because that's the, the weakest link in that rotary, for traffic to merge into that area. So there might be cars backing up in that area, but we've got to expect that down the road. It's a change of life, it's going to be a change. It's not going to be the same 45 miles straight through going down to Far River. So, and I talked, I talked to you personally about the other stuff, so those are my questions and my, hopefully you bring them up to the DOT.
Thank you, Ms. DeMones. Ms. Hilton?
So, I'm sorry, I, I have one more question about this truck apron, I'm kind of stuck on this. Based on the size of this rotary and the size of some of the big trucks that travel that road, not just the delivery trucks coming in and out of the casino, but there's a, you know, business district further south on Stafford Road, there's, you know, gas stations, there's gas deliveries, there's all that sort of stuff. And there are also a lot of big agricultural trucks that use Stafford Road as well. Is the size of this intersection or this rotary such that if you're driving, if you've got an 18-wheeler or something bigger than, you know, a UPS truck, that in order to navigate this, you're going to almost have to come to a stop before you enter the rotary?
Yes, well, it's, all the approaches, I didn't get into that detail, but they're all yield condition, so depending on if there's any traffic coming, you have to stop anyway.
Right.
If there's no traffic coming, they, they would have to slow down.
But even if there's no traffic coming, just based on the fact that, that if they're going to have to go up on that apron, right? Potentially. I, I guess what I'm trying to envision is whether or not those big trucks, in order to safely get in there and safely get up on the apron, are going to have to come to almost a complete stop. And, which is good for safety. The worry though is if you have a lot of those, pretty soon the traffic starts to back up really quickly, because you've got big trucks needing to almost stop and they don't start quickly. You know, when you slow down a truck like that, it, it doesn't power back up. So I just wonder whether or not, especially during times when, you know, you've got a lot of truck traffic or you've got the school buses, whether or not we're going to really see significant backup there.
Our analysis that we did actually did, was accounted, the trucks were accounted for in the analysis, so that, that was taken into consideration. And I think the trucks, they will need to slow down, probably definitely slower than the cars will. They, I guess it depends on how large they are, I don't think they would actually have to come to a physical stop if there's no traffic coming, but they would have to slow down to kind of get up around, on to the, the apron.
Ms. Perry?
My question for Mr. Brayton is, the travel lane to the truck lane, you said there's about a three-inch difference. Is that a grade or is that a actual lip? Is it a grade?
It's ac, it's actually a slope face curb.
That's, that was what I wanted to know.
Any other questions?
I just have one question about sightlines. Because it's a small arc and, and there's a new road being added for the casino, so if I'm an operator coming out of the casino in a big truck, you know, what is the sightline looking aft? Have all those been worked out?
Yes.
Those are all acceptable?
Yes.
And up by Hurst Lane where we have the 55 and over community, also adequate sightlines? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think you've gotten feedback and some very good feedback, especially on the speed limit. the, uh, speed limit signs, that's very important. The whole purpose of the roundabout is to slow down the traffic, that's why it's not a straight shot. Even coming up, uh, the boulevard, it jogs to the right, it's not a straight shot up like it is today. So, um, the whole purpose of it is to slow down traffic going into the roundabout in order to accommodate all the entrances and exits from, um, the roundabout. So I, I thank you, and if you could take these suggestions and, um, work with DOT, that would be highly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Brayton. Mr. Russo. Next item, I think you can just stay right there. See town council sitting as board of licensing, advertise licensing subject to meeting all legal requirements, C1, Twin Rivers, public hearing for approval of sound variance for extended hours of construction, construction work between nine PM and seven AM. Mr. Russo?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I think, as everyone knows, we've started an intensive phase of construction with earthwork and blasting, and, um, what we had suggested to the town through various bodies, through the casino subcommittee, through the building officials' office, through DPW, through a number of, um, offices, is that we would monitor construction, monitor what we're doing for hours, monitor noise, and then at some point return to this council to discuss, um, a, a variance from, it's, it's section thirty-eight, one oh one of the, of the ordinances. And I'll just give you my read of that ordinance. I don't know if it's disputed or if it's not disputed, but that particular ordinance allows a construction project from seven AM in the morning till nine PM at night to function without noise restriction. I mean, obviously you can't act completely at variance with your neighbors or without taking them into consideration whatsoever, but you don't have strict decibel ratings on your activities. Construction activities that take place after nine PM at night and before seven AM, those are subject to, um, uh, noise restrictions. And...
Excuse me. Um, Mr. Brayton, if you could bring that to the back of the room and discuss any questions? Thank you. Mr. Russo?
Thank you.
Proceed.
So, the activities from nine PM at night to seven AM in the morning are subject to noise restrictions. We took, um, noise readings at various points on the property, various points on Stafford Road in May, and, um, based on traffic, it fluctuated anywhere from sixty, this is the ambient noise, from sixty decibels to eighty-five, and if you look at your noise ordinance, eighty-five is where you should see your normal traffic, so you've got higher readings down on Stafford Road. We've continued to take at different times, and it's part of Gil Bane's charge, is to take noise readings on-site at different points in time and at different stages of construction while things are going on. And, um, if you go down on Stafford Road in different points further away, we are in the upper eighties, so we've, we've increased noise, ambient noise in that area, not by a lot, but we have during heavier operations. At points closer near where the parking garage is, et cetera, it's actually, it sounds counterintuitive, but it's lower because we don't have the ambient traffic noise at those areas. The ordinance wants you to be under seventy where your abutters are commercial and under fifty-five where your abutters are, um, residential. And the reason why we took ambient readings is that's just not, I mean, that's not being achieved with traffic noise at our residential abutters, and we can't achieve it during construction. So technically, if we're doing construction outside the hours of seven AM to nine PM, and a complaint was made to the police, and the police had to spend the money and take the decibel readings and so forth, we're gonna be technically in excess of the ordinance. I mean, there's no question about that. I mean, we're, um, uh, we wanna be candid, and we, we can't, we wouldn't be able to keep it under. So we took a look at, um, what is the best way to seek a noise variance, and what's the best way to communicate with the council? And what I'd like to try to do, as I said in the application, is take a, a point in time from now till the beginning of September, when we know we're gonna be completing our earthwork, and what types of variances are we gonna need for hours of operation at that point? And then come back here at the beginning of September and be able to look out ahead and say, "Okay, now here's what we're doing as far as a building coming out of the ground and the types of hours that we need to maintain, et cetera." So I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate to ask for a blanket variance and just say we'd like to be able to operate from nine PM at night to seven AM in the morning, 'cause someone's gonna say, "What are you doing then, and when are you doing it?" So at least from now till the beginning of September, what we'd like to try to do is get a variance that allows us to begin construction at six AM. Construction in normal course will go to dusk, and dusk now is probably quarter to nine or somewhere in that range. We're not gonna do that every day, but it will happen. For example, with blasting going on now, they're gonna start to be crushing rock on-site, and there'll be some days when the crushing will go beyond the six o'clock hour. So that is something that'll be happening on-site. Beyond that, as we get to the end of July, the only thing that we envision is that we're gonna have to be doing concrete placements. If you recall, we have the ability to do, uh, foundation, uh, footings and, uh, some foundation aspects out of sequence. So those trucks will come in and pour when they get there. I mean, it, it could be late at night, it could be early in the morning, um, you know, we just, we can't have them sit there with concrete in them. We'd be able to, uh, obviously what we've done is alert police when we have late deliveries, alert fire. We have a blasting protocol to alert folks, and we could do the same thing with the concrete deliveries. I just, I just don't know, as I sit here today, what days they'll come, but I know they'll come and they'll probably be after nine o'clock at night. So from a technical standpoint, the request for a variance is to be able to, from now until September one, start construction at six, be able to report to you at the beginning of September where we are in our process and what we need to do. And then the other things that we do envision happening, um, between the hours of nine PM and seven AM is in late July, we will be having concrete pours for the foundation outside those hours. So, that's where we are at this point in time.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Mr. LeBeau?
You guys are gonna have, and this is just my opinion, okay? I, I don't agree with any construction except for what the town ordinance is now. I'm not gonna grant or vote for overnight construction. These folks going through enough, you guys are gonna have to, and my view, no, I'm not speaking for everybody, I'm speaking for me. I'd like to see you, seven, two, whatever the hour is, make it work. Hire more people, do what you gotta do, but work inside them, that schedule, there's enough going on. And that's consensus of the town, so that's just my point of view. And I thi, I know Gil Bane, and you guys can pull it off. You don't need to work overnight. I have fireworks blasting over my house the other night, and it's Fourth of July, and it pisses me off.
Yep.
So that's gonna...
No, we're not, we're not planning to work overnight.
I know, but it's, but you're putting it out there where you could work overnight. And these concrete trucks could come in at night, and these people, life sucks for them as it is.
Yep.
You know, it's coming, the casino's coming, but let's come smooth. And it's, again, my opinion on it.
I understand.
Right.
Madam President? Mr. Edwards?
Sure. Actually, Councilor Ryan, if you'd like to go, by all means.
Ms. Ryan?
I was gonna, I was gonna wait to see what the people in town wanted, because I actually agree with Councilor LeBeau, but it sounded from what he said that I got my answer. I mean, I, I also think that they've got so much stuff going on there, and it's, um, I think you should make it work with the hours that are given. And I know it's gonna, I know it's, I know it's not what you wanna hear, and I know it's tough, but I think it's tougher on the people around there. So I, I agree with Councilor LeBeau.
Well, a pro, a, I mean, a project that... A project that size is gonna have impact on folks, no matter what you do.
That's right.
So just by way of example, I'll, I'll give you an example, um, on the blasting protocols. State law requires us to go out five hundred feet. We don't have any abutters within five hundred feet. We went out to a thousand, and we suggested a protocol, we had meetings where the protocol was to give an hour notice. Now, we sent out a letter for twenty-four hour.
Yeah.
Then we started blasting, and people got upset, so now we've gone to a twenty-four hour. And giving a one hour, and giving police our total schedule, and putting our total schedule on the website. So we're trying our best to balance.
Okay, hold on a minute. Is that, I thought you, I thought the protocol was that you were gonna give twenty-four hours...
We sent a letter, we sent a letter out to the abutters saying we would give twenty-four hour notice.
Okay.
Then we put on a community meeting, and at the community meeting, the blasting folks said, "That's not really gonna be workable, 'cause we don't know exactly what time, so we'll give hour notice." And that's what we did. And then we had folks complain that they didn't get twenty-four hour notice, so now we've gone to twenty-four hour notice, plus the one hour notice, plus posting it on the website. So we're trying as best we can to balance it, but you won't make the schedule if we don't get some relaxation. Now, the, the ordinance doesn't say that you can't do construction outside of hours, it just puts noise restrictions on you outside of hours.
Right. Right, no, I understand that.
So, I, I'm just trying to avoid getting into a battle of whether we're really violating the noise ordinances or not. If you have ambient noise at Stafford Road at eighty-five, and you have construction at eighty-five, let's say, then you're not really violating those ordinance.
Right.
So, I mean, we can get into that, I, I was hoping that we could do it in a way that...
Look, I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand where you're coming from. You're coming from the business, you wanna get the thing up, you wanna get it going and developed, I understand that. The flip side is you've got all these people who are already getting a lot of grief. And I think they know that they have to, you know, there's certain, the casino is gonna be built, but at the same time, I think, I think I'd go on the side of, of them, rather than, you know, if, if, you know, I, I think what Randy said is probably right, you guys will make it happen. And what I'm also more afraid of is the, the slippage kind of thing, not slippage with money, but slippage with, it's gonna be, uh, and, and I'm just saying this stuff, okay? Six o'clock, they're gonna start, and it's only gonna be for two months. And then I'm just afraid, "Well, it worked out pretty good for six, for two months, let's do it again for another three months," or "Let's do it again for another..." Because that, to me, is what has been happening. So, and I also understand I get two different sides. What you just said about the blasting is not this, that I heard in another side of the story. And so it's like, I'm trying to figure out which side is correct. But truthfully, I would, I would land on the side of the people who live here. You're gonna get your casino, it's gonna go, and it's just like, it might be a little bit longer, but I think it's, and I think also what Randy had said is like, if you get more people in there, you know, that's one way to do it as well.
I think you can do it in your timeframe. I mean, you can, you can get it in your timeframe. You're gonna have to stretch your timeframe, you can do it. You're shaking your head, no, Gil, you can't, but Gil Bane can do it.
No, they can't.
Yeah, they can't. Try.
Believe me, we've pounded it. We're doing the best that we can.
Yeah, well, you can't, it's just...
Okay, but, but the other thing is anyhow, the, you know, besides that, it's just like, the, the ordinance is there, it says it's there, you knew it was there, Gil Bane knows it's there, they knew it was there, and so it's like, that's what you gotta work with, in my, my feeling.
Oh, I understand, but, I mean...
No, and I, I know...
No, I, I, and, and the council's been great with us, I'm just having, trying to have a constructive discussion.
No, no, no.
I mean, we knew, we knew we'd be at this point.
Yep.
And we suggested a protocol as to how to address it.
Yep.
And everybody said that made sense.
Yep.
And now we're here, and, you know, I, I don't, you, I, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
But you also have to take into account that the noise readings that we're getting are not, I mean, they're, they match up with a project of this size, and the ordinance does allow us to go outside those timeframes, so...
But...
Madam President, there's, there's a time for public, time for public comment.
What, what I was saying is, the, the way the ordinance is set up is that you can continue to work outside those hours, you just have to take certain steps with regard to noise. And you can't, I mean, we specifically chose this site because we are seven hundred to a thousand feet away from our abutters. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying technically, if we continue to work, I mean, we wanna try to work with the council, we're not gonna do something that just thumbs our nose at the council, that would be foolish. But if we technically continue to work, I'm not so sure we're violating that noise ordinance. So, in, in some ways, I, I just, I just don't wanna be, punished isn't the right word, but I just don't want to be put in a position where we, we can continue to work outside those hours, and we said, "Here's a protocol that will do so," we're having open communications, and then it's, "Well, no, I'm gonna deny you the variance, meaning you can't work outside those hours," which, which the ordinance does allow us to do, we're just trying to do it in a way that's responsible.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I was, I was just gonna make a comment similar to, to Councilor LeBeau's. I mean, you guys are working with Gil Bane, and if, if Gil Bane, a large company like they are, can't tell their subcontractors in the concrete when to show up with the concrete, that's a problem. So, that's just, that's just my only, my only comment.
Okay, um, Madam Chair? Hold on, do you have comments? Ms. Hilton?
I, I do a little bit, and, you know, the, the whole measurement of sound thing, and I'm sure that Chief Blakey will agree with this, is a little fuzzy anyway, but, you know, there's a, a difference, I mean, if you're, if you live in the Stafford Road neighborhood, you're used to a certain amount of sort of road traffic noise that starts in the morning. But that's a whole lot different than construction noise. Construction noise is entirely different, and it's, you know, it can be a whole lot more jarring, and, you know, I agree with a number of my fellow counselors here that, you know, that neighborhood is going to experience significant disruption in their lives for an extended period of time. And, um, you know, I, I, I would prefer to minimize that, and especially during the summer months when people are sleeping with their windows open, you know, not everybody wants to be awake at six o'clock every morning. So, um, I'd like to see you find another way to make this work, rather than, you know, asking us to put more burden on an area of town that is gonna be living through a construction project for a long time.
Well, then, I, I would suggest, let us go back to the drawing board and come back to you with another proposal, then.
Uh, since this is a public hearing, I will open it up to the public for any public comment. Come up to the podium. Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen Benson, um, as most of you know, I represent Roger Belanger and his family, uh, they live, uh, on Stafford Road. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Gendrow, they are direct abutters, um, to the construction site, and I also represent Clara Custey, who lives on Hurst Lane. Uh, Mr. Belanger and his wife are here. I, I wanna, um, sort of amplify what Ms. Hilton said, because that's the nature of my comments, try to put a face on how this actually impacts the community. And I know that the chief is aware of this, and I know that many of the counselors are too, but in addition to Mr. and Mrs. Belanger living in their home, they also have their eighty-year-old in-laws living with them. And it is a different quality of noise. It's not like that ambient sound of traffic going by. We have recordings, I don't know if you, you've had them, and, and we're continuing to monitor them. They're, they're not scientific, but it does illustrate just how different it is from just cars whizzing by. So, I, I hear now from my brother what exactly the variance request is, but if there is gonna be a, another approach, I'd like some more information on how much noise they wanna make, uh, what the specific times will be, and can they confine them to specific times on specific days? So that if possible, in the event that you decided to entertain a second bite of the apple, um, at least I could advise my clients on what their rights were underneath our ordinance. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. My name is Richard Cabaseras, I'm a Fall River City Councilor, I live at 225 Wilson Road in Fall River. It's good to see you, I've talked to many of you offline. We try very hard in Fall River to be good neighbors to Tiverton, just like you try to be good neighbors to us. And as many of you know, uh, this new casino proposal doesn't benefit Fall River very much, if anything, it's a burden on our community. And doing something along these lines could burden our community more so. I've had some neighbors reach out to me and talk about the noise, and talk about how they can hear it, and how it's waking them up early in the morning, and I'm hearing the same thing coming from your community as well. So, today I'm asking and reaching out to you and asking you to be great neighbors for us, and if you have any issues with what's happening in our city, I'll try to be a great neighbor and advocate for you. in our city, I'll try to be a great neighbor and advocate for you as well. So, thank you for having me, and hopefully you'll do the right thing for both of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Suza, 49 Hancock Street. According to Google Maps Distance Meter, I live 1,750 feet from Blast Zero. I hear every blast. I hear every strike of the hammer. I don't like it either. I'm home, you know, this week cutting grass. I can feel the blast even on my lawnmower. But, you know, that zone was, and I'll put in our comprehensive plan to bring in some economic development. So, I, I know that. I know why, I know why we're having the businesses go in there. I personally would like to see them finish. So, if they accelerate the construction. Let's start off first, okay? Let's face it. The most noise is being made right now. You got those huge hydraulic hammers slamming the rock. They're drilling. They're blasting. That's the noise we're hearing now. That's the largest amount of noise you're gonna hear coming from that site. Once the footings are in, they start doing farm work, you're not gonna hear them. You're not gonna hear the trucks because the trucks are going up on the Fall River end. In my opinion, we should allow them to accelerate the, the construction so they can finish it, so we can get back to the piece. If you drag it out, we're gonna hear the blasting clear into the fall. Let them get up there and knock it out and finish it, and get the footings in the ground. And then, you're not, like I said, when they're up there working inside the building doing electrical, if they're at 12 o'clock at night, what difference does it make? You're not gonna hear them out of that woods. They're inside of a building. It's winter. Everybody has their, and that's where they're gonna be at that point. Let them finish the job. And let them finish it fast. I don't know. It makes me mad because we got a chance here for something good finally coming to this town. I understand some people, you know, they're retired. They got all day to sit home and watch TV or whatever they're doing, and they hear every bang. I understand that. Well, I get out of the house and I go somewhere to get away from it, I guess. It's, that's my, that's my advice. Get out of the house and go somewhere. Get away from it a while. Put a smile back on your face. Give them what they need to get the job done quickly. Then it'll be over, and you won't hear it.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Joe, I agree with you on once, once the building, once the building is done, and they can work inside, they can work as long as they want, so long as the neighbors don't have to put up with it. They can get, Gil Bane can get their building up, and then they can work quietly inside the building. And I do agree with you. I'd like to get it done and get it over with.
But if you let them go later in the evening, in the summertime, when the sun's out, and they can be up there and work, they can get the rock work done. That's the noise you're hearing. Once the rock work is done, you're not, if they're in, the trucks going in their poor concrete, you're not gonna be held to hear them if you're standing on Stafford Road. They're going in up on the, on, right on the Fall River line through the industrial park. They're not causing any traffic problems. Let me tell you, they're not even dragging any mud out of that site. You go up to somewhere, they're building houses around here. Every truck leaving is dragging mud. Their, their site is clean. They don't drag any mud out on the road. They got a police officer out there taking care of traffic, so there's no backups with any traffic coming in and out. They're doing a hell of a job up there.
I agree.
Help them. Help them.
Joe, easy there, Joe. Hey, I agree, Joe. They're doing a great job over there.
Mr. LeBeau.
No, I'm talking right now. Give me a minute, will you? Everybody else gets to say what they want all the time. Every time I get a mic on my hand, it's Mr. LeBeau. Let's have quiet here. Here we go. Here we go. Let's bang the hammer on me some more.
Mr. LeBeau.
What? That's enough. All right?
You can, you can make your comments later.
No. It's in my head now. It needs to come out now.
It's our turn now.
Wait.
Mr. LeBeau, this is a public hearing. This is for the...
I was talking to Joe. He's public.
It's for their comments to us. Then you'll have...
Okay, you get your hammer going on me again like you do every other week. LeBeau, be quiet. Never mind what everybody else wants. Let's just be quiet.
You're out of order. Please.
Yeah, I'm always out of order.
To Director...
Mr. Belanger.
Mr. Belanger, 125 Stafford Road, right on top of the, the, the construction.
You're about the same distance as I am, am I right?
200 feet, right on top of the construction. Now, I just wanna make a comment to, to what Ms. Hilton was saying before, as far as the, the, the kind of noise that we, we hear, okay, is, is something that individually, you hear a bang, or you hear some kind of construction noise, a little bit here and there. It's not, it's the constant, okay? We couldn't even eat dinner tonight and listen to our TV at our house because this constant noise was going on, okay? Enough is enough. And the, the, to the point she made about, somebody made about stretching this thing out. We're already stretching it out. This stuff is starting before 6:00 a.m. now. The line is, in the sand is 7:00 a.m. It's well before that. And I know you know that. I know you're nodding because we've already shared this information with you. But it, it's just, it's, it's constant noise, and, and I really appreciate the, the support that, that some of you have given us as far as being able to, to keep this restricted. Again, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Randy and what John Edwards said. Gil Bane's a pretty big outfit, and they put their mind to it. They can get this crap done in normal hours, so it's not affecting families and people that can't get up and ride on their motorcycle whenever the hell they want. They can just go and, and, and have to get up and go to work in the morning, and they have to come home at night and relax in peace. Families that have kids, that need to put their kids up into better normal times. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Lauren King, 233 Norman Street, Fall River. I hear the sounds at my house, and I'm not on top of the site as Mr. Belanger is. I'm just here to say, please, do what you said just now, and take the residents of that whole area into account. We don't want it. There is no reason that they can't confine the work to the hours that were specified, and that you should be held to doing it to those hours, and not encroach on either side of the 7 to 9, because it is really disruptive. It is really disturbing. And thank you for saying it is summertime. We're outside. We've got windows open, and you can hear it for quite a distance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bellai?
Just real quick. They've been banging ledge at Maplewood Cemetery for almost a year and a half now. So if you're living in Fall River, in the Maplewood area, what you're hearing is that. And it's been going on for over a year and a half down at the Bodleman Cemetery in Maplewood.
Mr. Bellai?
Jeffrey Bell at Bird Street. One thing I would like to ask this council, and it's pretty straightforward, you know, I'm not asking for anything exquisite. Twin River made a promise to the people to get their votes, to get this casino approved. Hold them to their promise and make, and make them eat crow. They've made promises. It seems now they're backing out on those promises to the people that voted for this. If they're gonna back out on their promises, then we don't need them here in Tiverton. Thank you.
Carol Silva, 1600 Eagleville Road in Tiverton. I'm a director abutter of the casino. I have just maybe three concerns, concerns on that extending the hours. First of all, I think that contract went out to bids, and when the contractors bid on that, I think they bid on it with the constraints of the hours that they had to work under. So, by changing that now, that's not really fair to the people who bid the jobs, I don't think, who bid it with the constraints of the work hours. So that's one thing. Another thing is, I did go to the blast meeting at Little Bear's, and I was told that, because I, I have a building closer than anybody else to where the ground waves would be, that behind my garage, it's a big auxiliary farm building, they would set up, I don't know the name of the machine, but they were gonna set up something there, and it was going to measure the disturbance underneath the ground. And did I give permission for that? I gave 100% permission for that. That hasn't happened. So that's another thing. And also, I wanna speak for the wildlife, because they're not here tonight, and they're very much displaced by all this activity. And they travel on the early hours of the morning, and that blasting starting earlier is really going to disturb them even more. I don't know if anybody else has seen the displacement of the wildlife. I've seen it big time. So, at least if they can have the peace of moving in the early morning hours, which is their normal time, you know, that would be good for them, because they can't speak. That's about it. And thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
Jim Swars, 169 Stafford Road. The easy way to solve the problem with the noise, change your variance, your ordinance to no construction between or after the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., because they're gonna push the limit.
Thank you.
At work construction where they do it before.
Padgendro, 81 Stafford Road. I'm one of the life sucks guys. Just wanna offer an opportunity for you people to come by my house anytime during, during the day, if I'm home or I'm not home. I have a patio in the backyard. You're welcome to go and really listen to what we have to hear. Because I don't think talking about it, levels and whatnot, can really do justice to the sounds. I get it. It's building. It's construction. I, I, I understand. You, it passed. We, we get it. But can we at least abide by the rules? That's all. That's all we're asking. Abide by the rules. It's 5:30. I've called twice. It's 5:30. It's quarter to 6:00. Come on. If I have to abide by the rules when I'm doing my roof, they should have to abide by the rules. That's all. Just keep things fair. And again, that, that's an invitation. You're welcome, you're welcome to walk in my backyard anytime you want. You're, you're welcome to, to hear. I'm sure you've already heard it. But that goes for everybody. Thank, thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Natalie Bergeron, Abel Heart Lane. For those of you who aren't familiar with where Abel Heart Lane is, our town, it's right along East Road. I live about as far away from this problem as you possibly can in our town. I think it's completely rude that you're text messaging while I'm speaking as well, Mr. LeBeau. Let me put that on the record.
Yeah, go ahead. Put it on the record.
Mr. LeBeau?
Will you stop with me already? If they say something to me, I'm gonna say something back. End of story. You have no idea what I'm doing.
You're not paying attention to me. I know that.
I know every word you're saying.
Okay. I live about as far away from this casino as you can in our town, other than living down near Grace. And I'm here because I feel the pain that everyone that lives on Stafford Road and lives down near Notre Dame in Fall River feels. I have family that used to have a home down there. I understand what that area is like. I understand the relationships and the close ties, and you're all very close together down there, too. So I'm here to stand up and to say that you guys are not alone. Like, just because you're down there, you're not the only ones in this town fighting for the sanctity of our small town. And, you know, you said, forgive me, I don't know your name again, Mr.?
Souza.
Souza. You said that, you know, let them go. Let's get this shit done quick. Come back. Let's get our peace of mind back. Peace of mind is gone now in this town. For all those people who live on, who live on Stafford Road are now gonna have to deal with incessant traffic, backups, tractor trailers, maybe some drug users tossing some, maybe some drug users. I'm talking to you because I addressed you.
Ma'am, you have to talk to the council, not to individuals in the audience.
Fair enough. So now we're gonna be dealing with potential drug users. Maybe you'll have a couple of needles tossed out the window onto your lawn. Yeah, maybe Mr. Belanger will be cleaning up after himself. We'll have people who are drinking and driving coming out there. We will have incessant traffic, noise, backup, and the 15,000 people that are already part of this traffic study, and the 3,000 that I think we, people said were supposed to be coming because of this casino, also are going to be amplified by the traffic coming up Stafford Road into Fall River, because we're gonna have a Market Basket. Amazing. It's gonna be low prices, and all the people from Westport and that side of Dartmouth are no longer gonna be going to Dartmouth to get their groceries. Everyone's gonna be coming to Market Basket, because that's where the money is saved. So, if you think it's just 3,000 additional people that are gonna be clouding up this rotary, you're all joking. You're all, you know, kidding yourself. And I know there's a lot of people here who are not in support of the casino, and I'm sure that there are a lot of people who are. But I feel as though it's my responsibility as a young resident of this town who has no vested interest in the casino, hates the idea of it, and is as far away and probably the least bothered by it as you can be. But I am here to stand ground with those people who don't feel like this is the right decision for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any more comments from the public? Last call. Any more comments from the public? The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Rousseau, what is your game plan?
Well, Madam President, I mean, I, I heard some comments I just wanna address. And one of them is, we're not planning on blasting starting at 6 o'clock. We wouldn't, I mean, we'd be more than willing to accept the limitation that we can't blast unless it's between the hours of the 7 to 9. So that's number one. I think what I'd like to do, if at all possible, is it possible to continue this to the next meeting and be able to maybe propose something that may work with some limitations of what we can and can't do at 6 o'clock? If the council's completely opposed to doing anything, then I, I don't wanna waste your time, but we're just trying to balance as best we can and get the project done. Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I just have a question. And maybe, I guess, this is more directed towards the solicitor. So, our ordinances do not have a restriction on actually doing construction. It's just solely on the noise generated from such activity, correct?
No, I, I don't agree with that statement, actually.
Okay, 'cause that, that's how I, I feel like it was presented to me. So, what's your interpretation?
Well, and, and, and I do have some differences with Mr. Rousseau on this thing. You're looking at two separate ordinances on this. Section 38-105.7 exempts construction and demolition noise, so long as that noise does not occur between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. But, you know, you also have Section 38-144D, and that limits construction and demolition work between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. So those ordinances track each other. So, when the question comes with just construction as opposed to just noise, those are the hours that are set in your ordinance for construction work. So I had thought that this variance was directed towards both, the noise and also the construction and demolition. But the plain fact is, is that Section 38-144D governs construction. That's outside construction, by the way. But it's construction. It's not just noise.
So, am I correct in assuming that even if the council was in favor of approving some sort of a sound variance, it still would not permit them to continue doing anything because they're not here for a variance for Section 38-144D?
Well, it, it's in Chapter 38, so Section 38-122 is the variance section. It's directed to both. But you'd really need a variance for both, both sections, which you're eligible to do under this chapter. 122 is the catch-all. That's how you get your variance.
That's what we, I mean, I interpret it differently, but we've asked for a variance from both hours and the noise.
Okay. I mean, I, I would make a motion to continue if, I mean, if you feel like you, you get, you wanna bring something back more specific, I think we should at least give you the opportunity to speak, but doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna do anything.
I understand.
Madam President?
Ms. Ryan?
I guess, I guess if you come back, you said you would rethink it, but if you come back, you still want to work at 6 o'clock?
I don't know. I'd like to speak to Gil Bane and see what we can do. I mean, it doesn't, I, I've been before this council numerous times and have been treated very fairly.
Yeah.
And I don't have to be the amazing Kreskin to determine that you're not prepared to give me the variance tonight, so.
That's good. That's, that's good.
And Councilman, Councilman LeBeau has said Gil Bane can do this and that. I'd like to talk to them and see what we can do. I, I will tell you that, in order to finish this within the timeframe, I mean, we've all gotta think outside the box and be able to do it. And I know that what former Councilman Souza said wasn't popular with the crowd, but he's right. I mean, we're trying to get this done by the beginning of August and get the heavy earthwork out of the way, which is a benefit for everybody.
No, I understand that. But I guess the box that you're talking about, you wanna work outside the box, but I want that box to be 7 o'clock. I don't want it to be 6:00. I don't want it to be 6:00. Because I, and so, you know, if you say you want to work outside of the box, work outside of the box, but keep that box 7:00 till 9:00. I know that's not what you want to hear either, but.
Then I would need to come back.
That's what I'm thinking, but what's the implications? I mean, it's just like if we just say no now, or, I guess I'm not understanding why the?
You'd have to vote again.
The request is for a sound variance. There's nothing about a variance on construction and demolition.
Well, you're going to need that, too.
The way I read this. So if they want a variance on the construction timeframe, they would have to advertise that, and they'd have to come back with a proposal, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So I've closed the public hearing on the noise variance. So I think that's a dead issue. If you want to come back, you're going to have to re-advertise and ask for a variance of the construction parameters that are in the ordinance. 38-44?
144D.
Because I think that's what you're going to get bounced up against, not so much the noise. So even if we gave you the noise, you'd still be restricted under that ordinance. So I think you really need to rethink this.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Just for Attorney Rousseau, if you do come back and it has something to do related to construction, would it be possible to have a representative from Gilbane with you?
They're here.
So they can, I think they would be probably more equipped to answer construction-related questions.
Yeah, no, they're here tonight.
Oh, they are?
I'm not so sure that would have changed things for tonight. I think I have to go back and relook at it.
Perhaps if there was like a publicized time schedule or something that has to do with the project?
Yeah, understood.
That might be helpful.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do we need to vote on this matter?
I think to keep the record clear, yes.
So do I have a motion?
Motion to continue to the next meeting? Is that what we're looking for? You're going to come back?
No.
No, they have to apply for a different type of variance.
Gotcha.
Madam President, I don't mind withdrawing the request for a variance tonight, and we'll go back and start over.
That's better.
One question. Do they only work Monday through Friday? Is that all they're working at the site, Monday through Friday?
No.
So they're working seven days a week, is what you're telling?
Not seven now, but working six.
So we have, from the applicant, we have a motion to withdraw this.
Request to withdraw the question as well as not to accept the request.
So do I have a motion to accept the request to withdraw this variance request?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, D, we'll give a little time for people to exit.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we wait a minute.
Ms. LeBeau, Ms. Ryan, we are now back. D, appointments and resignations. One, Board of Canvassers, Republican Committee list, six-year term to 10/15/2023. One A, Bobby Harris, 442 Church, Stone Church Road, Republican Town Committee recommendation. One B, Agnes Johnson, 97 Top Sail Drive. One C, Vicki Richmond at 327 Village Road. One D, Wayne Moran, 339 Village Road. And one E, Jeannie Mae Durfee, 2411 Main Road. It is required by state law that the Town Council President nominate the Board of Canvas Representative from the Republican Committee list. I nominate Bobby Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Madam President?
Oh, no, Randy said second, so then I said discussion.
Correct.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. You requested discussion?
Yeah, I just want, yeah. So could you just explain to me, is it, out of these five people, there's just, they put a, they put, the Republican Committee puts a list of five people, and then you just choose one? Is that how it works?
That's correct.
Okay.
May I, I'm sorry, Madam President?
Yeah, because I didn't understand this.
Under Section 17-8-1, this is a bipartisan authority. It's one of the few boards that requires a bipartisan, bipartisan makeup. Council President is correct. What will happen is that, I guess this is one of the Republican appointments to the board, that group is required to send a list of five names to the Town Council. Out of those five names, the Council President nominates one of them, and the council votes on it. It's all by statute. This is a statute that was originally enacted in 1956. It's been on the books since. That's the procedure by state law.
Okay. And so it's the same thing, the Democratic Party does the same? Oh, it's not?
Democrats could have pulled five names up as well, and the President could have nominated from either the Democratic list or the Republican list, because there's a vacancy.
Oh, okay.
His term is off, and so they could have, she could have chosen from either list.
Okay.
But the Democrats did not put forth.
Got it.
They were noticed of it, and they did not put forth the list. So you only have the Republican list.
Okay, may I ask a question, though? I mean, it's still going to remain a bipartisan board.
It's a bipartisan board, but you would have had both parties submit the listing of five.
Correct. Is there a Democrat on the board now?
Yes.
Yes, it has to.
Okay.
Cannot be more than two members on the same party.
Okay.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
For the record, as a registered Democrat, I would be remiss in saying that I would have preferred you nominate who the Republicans least wanted to see on the board.
Johnny, behave before you get hammered.
Any other discussion? Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Didn't say I wouldn't vote for it, though.
D, two, Harbor Coastal Waters Management, four reappointments for two-year terms to 7/15/2019. Two A, Stephen W. Anderson, 89 Swanburg Lane. Two B, Charles E. Lawrence, 108 Long Pasture Way. Two C, David E. Stewart, 593 Highland Road. Two D, Roger F. Winarski, 130 Bogomash Road. Do I have any motions? I don't believe any of these folks are here. Since these are reappointments, we can proceed.
Correct. You can make a batch motion if the council wishes.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Stephen W. Anderson, Charles E. Lawrence, David E. Stewart, and Roger F. Winarski to the Harbor Coastal Waters Management Committee, two-year terms to 7/15/2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Economic Development Commission, one reappointment, four-year term to 7/15/2021. Three A, Renee DeJesus Jones, 161 Highland Road. Do you have any comments, Renee?
No, I have no comments. I would like to continue, sir, if you have any comments.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We reappoint Renee DeJesus Jones to the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy, unexpired three-year term to 10/15/2018. Four A, Melinda Foley Marzello, 3991 Main Road. Yes?
Madam President, I did receive another request for appointment today, so, and this is a vacancy.
There's only one vacancy?
There's only one vacancy, and today I received a second request.
Madam President?
Melinda is here. Yes, Mr. Edwards?
I was going to suggest we continue this to the next meeting, just because we haven't seen the other applicant. Maybe we could do them both at the same time? Just my thought, unless the Linda's here.
While Ms. Foley Marzello is here, I think we should interview her for the.
Works for me.
Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like this position?
My name is Melinda Foley Marzello. I've been a resident of the town for 20 years. I'm actually serving currently on the Harbor Commission. A year ago, I retired from a 30-year career in education as a teacher and administrator, and I feel like I would do a great job on the library board.
Have you attended any of their meetings?
I have not. I've gone to some friends' meetings.
Friends of the library.
Yep.
Any questions from the council? They have had problems getting, having a quorum at their meeting. We would need commitment.
Yep. I think someone told me it was every other Wednesday. I can't remember, but I remember thinking it was not the same night as the Harbor Commission, so I could do it.
Yeah, I think it's on Wednesdays. It's once a month.
Once a month.
Thursday, Wednesday of the month.
That wouldn't be a problem.
So that's not a problem?
No.
Okay. Just had to double-check, make sure. Okay, so we have another applicant?
Yes, I've got the man today.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll just wait in here?
Yep. So that would, do we have, need a motion to continue that to the next meeting?
Yes.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Motion to continue appointment of the Library Board of Trustees, single vacancy to the next meeting.
Second.
A motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous. D, five, Planning Board, two vacancies and one reappointment, three-year terms to 7/15/2020. Five A, Susan Gill, 1392 Main Road. Now, is this the one reappointment?
Yes, she is on. This would be a reappointment.
Hi.
Hi. I guess for people that don't know me on the council, just a little background, my primary education was in nursing. I've worked coronary care units, intensive care units around the country over a period of time. I also ran a small business for about five years as an owner-operator on the east side of Providence. Since doing that, I've also had four children who are now grown and out of the house most of the time, and so I have time and energy to contribute. I have served on the Economic Development Commission as a member and vice chair. I served on the Recreation Commission as a member and chairman, and during that tenure, I helped coordinate the implementation of, what was it? Oh, the initial trunk-or-treat program, the independent contractors, the food trucks at the beach, and also the kayaking and paddleboard program that started down there a couple summers ago. Since joining the Planning Board, I've learned a tremendous amount. I worked on the Comprehensive Community Plan extensively two summers ago when it was before us. I've sat on the Tiverton Heights Comprehensive Permit. I've sat on the Carpionato Development Program. What else have I done? I'm now the vice chairman of the Planning Board. I also, this winter, helped coordinate the development of the bylaws and the policies and procedures that you receive this winter. I've also been serving for the last two years on the Grinnell's Beach Improvement Program, and I, once a week, do Meals on Wheels. So I've learned a lot about the community, and I enjoy it. I like to give my time. I like to volunteer, and I like to make a positive contribution to the community, so.
And Susan has also neglected to mention that she has been graciously serving as our interim administrative officer for planning now for how long?
Two months.
Yeah, and if you've spent any time down in the planning office, it is functioning at a remarkably higher level than it was before. So thank you, Susan.
Do we have any other applicants?
No, and you'll notice that someone has resigned as well on the bottom, but I do have to make mention that Brett Pelletier is currently on the board, and I did not list him on here, but he is willing to continue on the board. I'll have to put him on the next meeting, and there's no problem with him sitting on planning in between, right?
Yeah, he's uninterested in being reappointed for a full term.
He won't make a full term, but he said till September or until you can, you know, give you time to find some more candidates. It'll at least keep a quorum and things going. So I will have to put his name on the next agenda.
So is he one of the two vacancies?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, he's going to be one of those two vacancies.
He was interested to sit through.
Because he was only filling in an unexpired term.
He was interested to stay until he got through the casino.
Later on, Ed Campbell has resigned.
How many members are on that board?
Nine.
Nine.
And you have one resigning.
Right.
And you have two vacancies.
Well, counting that resignation.
With this one resigning, you do. You have one vacancy now, and that resignation will make two.
So there are down to seven members on the board right now?
Well, Brett's still there. He was willing to, or able to stay through August to get us through the final plan of the casino program. And that would make sense to let him stay.
I believe we'd have to vote on that, though, right? Because isn't he technically filling a term that's expired at the same time as yours?
Yeah, actually, I got to tell you, I'm a little uncomfortable with the discussion because it's not on the agenda for tonight. You don't have his resignation on, so I think you need to confine it to what you're doing with Ms. Gill, just to comply with the Open Meetings Act. So that'd be a discussion for the next meeting.
I'm just trying to get an idea of how many vacancies they have right now, if they can come up with a quorum for a meeting. That's what I'm trying to find out right now.
Here's what you need to know, Mr. Perry, on this. Under the State Enabling Act, a quorum for Planning Board purposes is never based on the amount of members that are there. It's, your vote has to be a majority of the total members. That can create some problems if, you know, there's a quorum, nine members, you have five, but that means all five have to vote for the application for it to be successful. It's a four-to-one vote, and it goes down. So that's something to bear in mind when you think about your membership of the Planning Board.
That's why I'm asking the question.
You must have anticipated my answer.
I did.
We were all having that question.
So, Madam President, since Susan is a reappointment, and that we're not addressing, later on, we're accepting a resignation, but we're not addressing that vacancy, can we move forward tonight?
Madam President?
It is a reappointment. Yes, Mr. Edwards?
I personally, and by the way, thank you for your service, but I personally would feel more comfortable if we had time as a council to go out and find other qualified candidates. And what I mean by that is, we need people on that Planning Board who understand plans, be they, you know, background in architecture or engineering or construction. And I think now is a great time for us as a council to move forward, putting people who have technical qualifications on that board. And I think that with two more weeks, we'd be able to find three people who would like to apply, and I'd like to move in that direction.
I'll second that. I appreciate everything Sue has done for us, but she's been way, and no offense, Sue, but you send people out, you cost businesses money, you make people do things they're not supposed to be doing. I would prefer a resignation from you than a reappointment. Hey, hey, I'm talking right now. Oh, now all of a sudden it's fine?
Madam President?
Wait a minute. He has the floor. Have you completed?
No, I haven't completed. I've got a long list.
Well, complete your statement.
But I don't want to be interrupted. You'll have your chance.
Just recently, Sue has gone down to the building, to the DPW head, and asked for something that shouldn't be asked for, opening the door for a lawsuit because of the watershed Just recently, Sue has gone down to the building, to the DPW head, and asked for something that shouldn't be asked for, opening the door for a lawsuit because of the watershed area. And if Bill could, Bill, would you mind coming up here and explaining something for me? I hate to put you in the middle of it, but, well, I can't do that either, because if you, if we reappoint Sue, I'm gonna have a major investigation on all the issues that's been going on with the Planning Board over the last five years. Okay? If you want to stop, you're gonna look at me the whole time or can I talk? I'm not one of the, I want to just speak my piece. It's, I've been waiting eight months to speak my piece, and it's coming out tonight.
I know you want to speak your piece, but you can't get personal.
I'm not getting personal. I'm just, I have a list, a laundry list of things that can't be done.
So you have some issues.
A laundry list.
Just review your laundry list. I don't need information from other people.
I do. I need, I need information from Bill, from a recent occurrence that happened that could cause a lawsuit from us for this town.
Is that appropriate?
I don't know what the issue is, but if we're gonna talk about litigation for the town, I don't want to do it in public.
Well, then we can't do this in public then. This can't be done in public, and I would like to chair this for executive session. I don't want, be appointing anybody who did a laundry list of things that can't be done anymore. You can't send people to a private, for the 777 Main Road after there's an occupancy, send an engineer over there. That's not allowed. Long pledge. That's not allowed. I was at that meeting. Oh, let's go spend somebody else's money. Sue initiated that. And Peter, the attorney, didn't stop it. So it's not just Susan. This stuff needs to be addressed. This is why we can't get business in this town. We need a total change. If nothing changes, then nothing's gonna change. We need a brand-new planning board and we need to, I appreciate all the work Sue does. I really do, but we need to go in a direction where we have qualified people. She's admitted herself at the podium. She's not qualified to be an AO. And we hired her as an AO.
Yes, I understand, but she has had support from a planner to do that.
That's.
For other laundry list of issues, we can certainly take it under executive session review and investigation at the next council meeting.
If that's the way you want to handle it.
I believe that would be appropriate.
Yes.
So I will ask for a motion to continue.
So moved.
May I speak now?
Ms. Hilton?
I, I have to say, I'm, while I understand members of the council can get frustrated about things, I am beyond appalled that we would attack a volunteer the way that we just attacked a volunteer tonight. I think it is absolutely appalling. It's, it's frankly shameful. And, and, you know, many people don't necessarily understand the rules and the regulations of the planning process, but Susan has been a member of the Planning Board for how long now, Susan?
Three years.
Three years. And I would venture to guess that Susan's understanding of the regulations, which some people do not like, and they don't like the zoning code, and they don't like the regulations. But, you know, people need to learn to separate the messenger from the message. And it is absolutely unfair for anyone who truly doesn't not understand the zoning code to blame the Planning Board because they don't like the regulations that the Planning Board have to live under. And with all due respect, Councilor LeBeau, and I appreciate that you are entitled to your opinion. I have spent significantly more time on zoning issues than you have. I've had a number of conversations with you, and frankly, in my opinion, your interpretation is incorrect. The Planning Board's interpretation is correct. This is my opinion. And, you know, the idea that we're going to go out and find a bunch of qualified people, who in God's name is gonna want to come and serve this town if this is the way that we treat volunteers? We were without a planner. We were without anybody to be our administrative officer for planning. We asked the chair of the Planning Board. He declined and.
And he should be let go for declining.
And, and Susan Gill offered to step in when we asked her. She didn't volunteer. She's done a tremendous job. She's cleaned up a bolt-load of problems that existed down there. And the idea that we're just gonna go out and find these people who are so qualified to be planners, you know what? They're, they don't exist. There are not a lot of them out there. Many of the people who have the skills to do this either can't do it because it's a conflict of interest, because they work in this town, and then they end up having to recuse themselves all the time on discussions because they work here. And the rest of them won't do it because it's just a thankless miserable job. And frankly, the Planning Board lets its own agenda and its own personal biases, you know, get in the way of whether or not the Planning Board is actually following the law or not. This Planning Board's had a terrible go of it. You know, without getting too much into personnel issues, we, we've had some issues with leadership and, and staff to support the Planning Board. It's had to muddle through a lot of big things without a whole lot of support. I cannot believe that this is how we would treat a volunteer that has given us at this point hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteer time. Because some of us up here don't understand that the Planning Board is actually doing its job. And just the fact that you would admit that the town solicitor, when advised of whatever Susan's egregious behavior was, agreed, says that, you know, the issue may not be with the Planning Board. It may be with somebody else's interpretation of the rules. This is absolutely just, I, I, I'm, I'm, you know, this council doesn't always function that well. This is the first time I can truly say that I am actually ashamed to be sitting here.
Are you done? Can I talk now?
You're talking to me.
I am talking to you. I asked her if she's done.
Are you finished?
I don't know.
I have to have an answer. I completed your statement so that we can move on with the meeting.
I'm, I'm finished for now.
Mr. LeBeau.
With everything that I have that happened in the town, starting with my project forward, it's not coming from me, because I don't know 100% of everything. I've checked with attorneys and I've checked with other people to find out what the. What the Planning Board is allowed to do and what the Planning Board is not allowed to do. And everything that I have here is not allowed to do by the Planning Board, and they do it. The medical.
May I ask Mr. LeBeau a question?
We can, we can, let's just say this. We can discuss this in this meeting and go on and on, but I think the appropriate course of action is we have a motion to continue this two weeks. Do I have a second?
I would just like, I want to still say something, because you've let other people talk.
Ms. Ryan.
I agree that the Planning Board needs to get changed, but to me, Susan Gill has been fantastic. And you're knocking out the wrong person to change the Planning Board. That's my opinion. I'm not doing a five-minute talk or a 10-minute talk. I am also appalled about the way this, this council has just treated her. I think it's awful.
When you say this council, you mean me, but you know what?
No, I don't mean you.
No, if it's okay, because it is me.
No, it isn't. It's you.
This has been burning me up.
I know it has. It's you, and it's also, I didn't like the way Council Edward said it either, okay? It's, it was both of you.
That's okay. I take the full responsibility. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but we.
No, it's your opinion, so that's fine.
This stuff needs to be addressed.
That's fine.
It needs to be addressed. You can't just go out and spend other people's money. It's not just Sue. Peter, the attorney, approved it, and he should have never done that.
That's a different discussion to make, to me.
We need to have another discussion on this, not at this point in time. So we will have a motion to continue this item.
What's the motion for?
To continue this item to the next meeting and a second. All those in favor of continuing this item to the next meeting? Four opposed, two. Motion carries to continue this item to the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton and Ms. Ryan.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Ms. Mello.
This position has been advertised several times, and I haven't got members. What do you want me to do if you think in two weeks you're gonna get them? We have to advertise? That's not gonna happen in two weeks. I mean, you're not gonna get.
You never know.
Is that being common from the public?
No.
Because as someone who had to.
Are you sure, are you sure you want to do that?
As someone who had to go through the process of looking for people.
Next item, D six, Tiverton Zoning Board of Review, one reappointment, five-year term to 517-2022. Six A John R. Jackson, 24 Born Avenue. And that's one, that would be one motion, correct?
Sorry.
That would be, the reappointment is for John R. Jackson, correct? And the second item on that is for Peter Mello as the annual appointment for the second, for the first alternate?
For the first alternate, yes.
Okay, so it's two.
Reappointment of the first alternate and a reappointment for the fourth.
Those need to be separate calls.
Correct. That's why I'm asking, because the way it's written, it looks like it's, those two are. Okay, so I know Jay's not here. He's been on the zoning board for, I think, what'd he say, 30-something years? No, 30, for a long time. So do I have a motion to reappoint John R. Jackson?
So moved.
To the zoning board of review for a five-year term, 715-2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Peter Mello is not here as well. Do.
I did receive a email from him that he was, had to work this evening.
Do I have a motion to, for the annual appointment to first alternate, Peter Mello, 1912 Crandall Road?
So moved. Sorry.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Sorry, Joe, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Resignations, seven. Planning Board, Edward T. Campbell, 90, Charles Drive, number five. Do I have a motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
Motion to accept Edward T. Campbell's resignation and thank him for his service.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Unfinished Business, E one, Town Administrator, Authorization to Proceed with Energy Source as Selected Vendor to Complete Lighting Retrofits for 1A Fire Station Number Two, 85 Main Road, and 1B Fire Station Number Three, Crandall Road.
Hello, Madam Secretary and Councilman.
Madam President, one moment.
Mr. McGreevy.
Yes, a little context here. So in April, you all voted to approve this program in very specific places. These two stations weren't included because the return on investment didn't exist at that time. We went ahead with Station One. But as Mr. LeBeau is gonna mention or talk here, is about how that, the, these now have a better return on investment, and that's what we're seeking approval for.
Okay.
Please, go ahead.
Now, now in 2017, National Grid has a higher rebate program for certain fixtures to be installed in facilities. I reran the numbers for the town of Tiverton to see if they would be positive cash flow, which they are positive cash flow now. The job costs did go up 2,000 roughly on each location, but there's still zero money out of pocket. Reason why the job costs went up is because I'm putting new fixtures in certain areas instead of doing a retrofit, which is just changing the ballast and lamps. National Grid gives more rebates for a new fixture. So what I simply did was change off from retrofitting to new fixtures. It became a positive cash flow job for the town, and that's about that. Before, one was negative $3 a month, I believe. The other one might have been negative $16 a month. Now, they are click, click. On Main Road, which is the main fire department, has a $19 positive cash flow a month, which means after paying for the lighting, you're still saving $19. And on Crandall Road, they have a $28 positive cash flow. So it'd be the same as the other five buildings we did previously, all new LED lighting such as what's above our heads now. National Grid's gonna give you an OBR of five years. Last year, they're only, gonna give you four years, and some of them are 4.2-year payback. That's why we had the negative cash flow also. And just FYI, for example, the five buildings that we already finished, you're actually spending less money on them because the new rebates that occurred on those jobs that already existed. So you're actually saving more than what you were saving, and the job's less money than, than what, than what it originally was.
Excellent, excellent. Any comments from the fire chief?
Madam President, I did meet with Damian today and discussed it, because originally, when we had looked at this back in April, it was not cost-effective at that time. Change of the rebates and such, at that time, we were in a negative cash flow if we went with this. I mean, it's not a lot, and the payback, I think, is four years over it unless we buy it outright, but right now, it does seem that it would be a better benefit for us to go ahead and do that from what I've seen in the paperwork he's presented.
And the lighting's all installed on Station One, and that.
That's all done, yes, ma'am.
And that looks great.
Looks great. I haven't got any of those bills yet to figure out where we're at with it, though.
All right. Any questions from the council? From Mr. LeBeau, or?
Madam President, I have a question. I got a call from one of the crew that work with these guys, putting the lights in. They tried to get into the school to do a count for the school. School superintendent shut them down. I believe we sent them into the school to lower the lighting and save a ton of money at the school department. So I sent an email over to Mr. McGreevy, and. I didn't know where it fell at that point. I just mentioned that I would mention it tonight to get the lights changed at the school to save them a ton of money.
I think the, the appropriate course of action is if you want to get an estimate for the school, you have to work through the school superintendent.
We've, we've made numerous tries to contact them. I mean.
Then you'll have to contact the school committee. So you've already made contact with the school committee?
Madam, sorry, just to, just to give a little information, National Grid is also pushing for this because the town of Tiverton, the high school alone, I know it's a huge job, it's over a million-dollar job, but National Grid's given over $750,000 for the project. And the other funds, just as we did municipal buildings, would be a five-year OBR, so it'd be positive cash flow.
Again.
It's a win-win situation.
You have to talk to the school committee and the, the school superintendent.
So we'll just go online, just call it and email every one of them? That's the best result? I'm just, that's from your experience.
I think you've made.
Yeah.
And certainly, you can review the town's numbers with them, but you gotta build your case and present it to them, not us.
Okay, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get the right direction, that's all.
That's the direction you need to go in.
All right, thank you so much.
So to our, any other questions from the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
A question for the solicitor. Can we take both these as a batch, or do we have to do them separately?
You can badge.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
Motion to authorize the town administrator to proceed with Energy Source as Selected Vendor to Complete Lighting Retrofits at Fire Station Number Two, 85 Main Road, and Fire Station Number Three, Crandall Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We like our lighting, especially if it saves us money.
Especially here. It's nice.
It's nice.
D two, we have Linda Lawson, Tiverton Days, 2017, requesting approval of town sponsorship of events. Ms. Lawson.
Thank you. So although I'm here tonight representing this town-wide celebration, some of our planning committee members are also here, Barbara Pelletier, Sally Black, Deanna Moran, and Mike Decotis. So we're back before you again to request town sponsorship of this town-wide celebration. It started in 2013, and the intent was, was to build community spirit as well as community pride. And after this evening, I think we could use some of that. So our request, I know that you have documents in front of you regarding our scheduled events. Like I said, we've done this since 2013. We did not have it last year. Our goal all along was this, to be a town-wide celebration and, and not to create an organization around it, not to make money off of it, not to do anything other than give back to the community and celebrate the people in all aspects of our community and our town. We also came forward with a volunteer committee, which everyone is welcome to join and, and be part of the planning, and have it to be transparent and out in the open, and, and to work with our town council, as well as our DPW, our fire, our police, and our town administrator, our town clerk, and, and kind of share in this whole process. So I don't know what kind of questions you have of me. I know we've kind of. So, I don't know what kind of questions you have of me. I know we've kind of left this from last time. I did receive a list of questions from the attorney's office with regards to some things, concerns or questions that they had. No fee will be charged for any of these events. Every event is absolutely free. No event is closed to anyone. They're all ages, open to all, nothing is restricted. So, all members of the public are invited, and all of the events are held on town property, or that we have the permission to use. In that case, it would just be the state road that the parade goes down. So, so we kind of meet all of the requirements that was, that was submitted to me. You can see the events from Friday night, the bonfire down at Grinnell's Beach, the lighted flotilla by the yacht club. The music is acoustic like we've had in the past. Saturday morning is the parade, family activity at the library with some rock painting. We're doing something a little bit different. Instead of having a, a music dinner kind of event, we're doing an outdoor movie over at the high school. And then Sunday morning, someone volunteered to run a yoga session for us, which is free, open to all. And then the fire department is having an open house on Sunday afternoon. I have spoken to the DPW director, as well as the police chief, as well as the fire chief, to address any and all their concerns, to review our schedule, and any, you know, answer any questions that they may have. So, that's where we are at this point.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
I have a question. So, it says on the agenda, requesting approval of town sponsorship of the event. So, I'd like to know, what does that mean?
That this would be a town-approved event, that it would be run and overseen by the town. So, we're not looking for any money. We are collecting donations. So, whatever cost of the musician, the outdoor movie, we're absorbing that through business and individual donations from, from community members.
Okay, and what about overtime? Is that, is that, how is that going to work? Overtime for fire, police, DPW?
This would be, this would be treated like any other community event, so the Christmas festival, the trunk or treat, or whatever other community celebration. We would be looking at it to, whether it be the insurance through the trust, or any coverage, be treated like any other community event.
That's for insurance, but would that also be, you're also-
Just like, just like the Christmas celebration or the holiday celebration, it would be handled, it would be handled the same way. The, the town absorbs that because it's a town-sponsored event.
Madam President, I think, I think your question is, is who's paying for the police and fire details? Is that what you're getting at?
Police, fire, and DPW. I'm assuming it's going to be overtime. That's what I'm asking.
Well, I, I don't know that I would necessarily know it's overtime, Chief. Maybe you can-
Yes, that would be-
Okay.
So, do we have an estimate on what the staff cost would be for this event? Between, like, the police overtime and the fire department overtime and the DP, I mean, is there an estimate on the, on the cost of that?
Let's just, this is declared, what we have to do with it. I would need probably eight people. I'm sorry, I apologize.
For the, for the parade, I would need four, eight people. For the bonfire, four. And I think that would be pretty much the extent of it. There would be no requirement to have anyone at the, at the outdoor movie.
I guess I'm thinking cost.
Cost.
Approximately.
That would be a minimum of how many hours for each man?
Four.
Four-hour minimum, so four times 12.
Four times 12. Say $35 an hour. Forty, actually, $45 an hour.
Okay, so-
So, ten times, ten times forty-five would be $450. Roughly thereabouts.
$450?
Roughly.
For the weekend?
Yes.
Okay.
How much was your cost two years ago? You had to pay for this, right?
We, yeah, we've always paid for the police detail. I don't recall, I don't have those figures in, in front of me, but it was probably something similar.
Oh, you mean you, you paid through donations?
Yep.
Okay.
Because, yeah, because it was just a community volunteer, you know, volunteer committee, we did pay. So, and the sustainability of it, and it's kind of grown to the portion of, you know, everyone kind of, you know, we were disappointed not to have it last year, and, and the funding piece of it between the insurance and whatnot, it's, you know.
Okay, so then I would, do you have the figures for an estimate for fire and also an estimate for DPW?
I don't have an estimate for DPW and fire. We've never received any-
But you paid for them a couple of years ago. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, how much is this going to cost, that's all.
The only detail I'm placing on it is I am putting two guys on the water for the flotilla. So, that's four hours, that's less than $200, I think it is for those two guys. The other, the open house is an idea that we had to try to sell the fire department, so I'm doing that out of fire prevention. So, I, I feel that's more of a community fire department need than, than for this event itself. So, the only thing I have is the two guys on the water for, for the flotilla.
And are you having anybody at the bonfire?
I'll have my regular on-duty staff there.
So, so they'll just be on duty?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so-
And the guys themselves, they've all, my understanding is everybody's coming in to march on their own on Saturday.
Okay.
Okay.
We're not paying people overtime to march, that's not happening.
And so, okay, so I can see the director for DPW coming up with his figures.
So, um-
And it's rough, I'm not, you know-
It's rough. So, if I had to have two guys come in to deal with something, you're talking about roughly 170, four hours, that's about $176.
Okay.
But I'm thinking that during normal, normal hours on Friday, we'll bring the pallets down to the beach for what we need to. We can clean them up Monday morning unless there's a need to do that, so maybe I, DPW doesn't need to put in overtime for, for this event.
Okay, so it looks like altogether, so thank, thank you all for doing that. It looks like altogether, it's less than $1,000.
I got $650. If the town doesn't want to pay the bill, I will.
Madam President?
No, I, yeah, it's less than $1,000.
Forty-eight hours, was it $45 an hour?
He said four, I asked for a figure. It was like $450, and then, all right, what am I missing here? $450 for what?
It's, let's see, it's $45 an hour times four. That'd be, it's ninety, 180 per person, if I had eight people.
Yeah, I thought you said you needed 12 altogether.
And then, what do you, I was, the other question that would lead to rain on this parade is the, the parking situation would have to be addressed, or we'd have to talk about that right now, at some point. Regarding the parking in that area, I spoke with Mr. Anderson today, Mr. McGreevy. The parking lot is going to be open, but we'd have to decide what the availability is for that parking area. Doesn't sound like it's going to be available for park, off-street parking.
The beach parking is-
Yes, I think with everything being down there, it's not going to be available. I think we agreed on that today.
We, we closed the beach down. We've never had parking on the beach for the event. The gates get closed probably about 3 o'clock.
Again, then the neighborhood situation would, would play into the parking area, so we have enforced it. It's kind of a tough situation.
Madam President?
For the town.
Okay.
For the chief regarding parking, maybe we can, I don't know, we can ask Sally about using Fort Barton. Okay. Yeah, so maybe, I mean, maybe we could, we could direct people there because, you know, that's the same thing we did for Singing Out Against Hunger. Just a thought, I'm trying to be helpful.
Well, I think what, Madam President, I think where we left the parking conversation was, it's not a cost conversation, but today where we left it was, you know, if approved, we can work out where exactly we can park and can't park.
But I guess from what I just, I thought I was getting the, all right, I'm not now exactly sure what the numbers I got were for, but what I really want to know is how much this is going to cost. Because it's, it's hard to say, okay, you want us to approve it, but it's just like, I have no idea how much it's going to cost. And so, it's like, is that something that I don't know who would be the one to do it, but I, you know, I said, I'm looking at this, and I was like, oh, it's a lot less than what I thought.
The money that we've, we've raised, we've always been able to cover the costs. I mean, the money would always, would come to the treasurer instead of coming to us. I'm not, you know, to come before you to say, I will have, I mean, if we're holding it on our own and it's not a town-sponsored event, we're going to have to maybe not have it, maybe have it this year, maybe not continue, maybe someone will step up. I'm really not sure.
But did you, you and your committee, I mean, you must have an idea of what you spent, you know, previous years, no? All, all I'm looking for is, is an estimate.
It's, I mean, it's varied. I mean, it could be, I mean-
If I, if I may, for, at $45 an hour, four times, it'd be $180 for one man. I need 12 men.
So, I said, it's nineteen, comes up to nineteen and change.
Okay. Okay, so that's nine-
Two hundred and forty-five, and then 176.
I need eight people for the parade.
Okay, well, that's good, okay.
And I need for traffic control.
Got it, okay.
So, the- Hang on a second. So, when you're saying traffic control, do you mean traffic control during the parade?
Correct, just as-
And is that part of the, is that part of the eight, or it's eight plus?
No, that's part, that, that includes the eight.
Right.
For just, just for the traffic, all the side streets and businesses have to be blocked off.
So, the parade is approximately one hour. So, there's-
Again, I can't-
I know, I know what you're saying. So, there's a four-hour overtime minimum for one hour.
That's fine. That's what I want to know.
So- So-
I mean, if we can't afford the four people at the bonfire, we'll cut it down to two at the, but, okay.
Linda, may I ask some questions, just because I'm a little confused. So, the sponsorship, when you're saying sponsorship, because I don't, I mean, I don't recall the town ever sponsoring, Nancy, I don't know, like, we don't- I'm trying to remember something that we sponsored like this that wasn't like out of the recreation depart, like, is there-
The waterfront, Tivon Waterfront Festival.
Waterfront Festival?
With the carnival and the, and the stage. I mean, it was pretty extravagant.
And there were fireworks too.
Fireworks.
So, the sponsorship-
If, if I, if I may, and I don't know the history, but the request tonight is to have this as a town-sponsored event. When you do that, this becomes a town event. The main utility for that is that, and I checked with the, the trust, that will make it so that the event is covered under the current trust policy. What we're talking about now is one thing that the trust does when you have events of this nature, there is coverage, but as they always caution you, the two things they're always looking for are risk management and proper loss prevention activities. That's why Chief Lakey is saying what he's saying, and Chief Lloyd's saying what he's saying, and Bill's saying what he's saying. That's all that you need to do here. The one thing that the trust did ask is that if there are any vendors at this that they show proper evidence of insurance, the yoga instructor also, if you get an insurance policy from her, I'm sure she has one.
We'll request certificates of insurance from, from all of them.
Okay, and the rest of the events are really town events, so that's what you're looking at, at here. But when you say town-sponsored, that means this is a town event, and there will be coverage under the trust policy.
And there's no extra charge for that coverage, right? It just falls under our regular, like-
That's correct, but one thing that Mr. Ridlon did say to me was he asked Paul to just take a quick look. They have a, they call it the tulip program, and that gives special event coverage, which is a very nominal charge. I'm not so sure that this event falls underneath it. They just asked that town administrator take a look at it, but yes, you do have coverage if there's an accident, and there's some negligence, that would be something that would be picked up under the trust policy.
So, so, so in terms of sponsorship, what, what you're looking for is for the insurance coverage and for us to pick up the cost of the police and the fire and the DPW, so those are the, and pick up those costs, right?
We're requesting this to be a town event.
I know, but I'm just trying to clarify what that means. So, this is the part that I, this is where I'm a little confused. The entity, and I know you have a group, I guess, that's organizing, right, this, the entity that's organizing this in the past was a separate entity, right? Didn't it have a, it-
We've, we filed a not-for-profit.
Right, so you're a 5-0-
No, we're just a not-for-profit.
So, you're a not-for-profit, and what's the name of the not-for-profit?
Tivon Celebrates.
Okay, so Tivon Celebrates, which is a separate not-for-profit entity, is the organizer here. And are there, like, and I guess, this is where I'm looking to tone it, because I just want to make sure we're covered in all this. So, if the organization of this is all done by another named entity that doesn't have a relationship with the town, is there any issue with that?
No, but I'm, I'm going to answer it this way. No, they're organizing it, that's great. However, the trust is going to be looking for the town to make sure that you have your proper risk management and loss prevention procedures in place. That means the two chiefs and the DPW director have to be involved, along with the town administrator. I don't mean to cut him out of it, but they have to make sure that traffic control is proper, security is proper, fire prevention is proper, which they would do. That's really what you're talking about for the, for the town-sponsored event, and that's something that you're really required to do under the trust policy.
So, somebody needs to review all the plans?
That's correct, yes.
Somebody on behalf of the town needs to review all the plans and say, we're sure that everything is okay here?
That's correct, yes.
So, the bonfire at Grinnell's, where is the bonfire going to, on the beach or in the parking?
On the beach, same place that it's been since 2013.
I'm only one person. I'm just going to tell you, we just put, and, and maybe Bill will tell me differently, and maybe the fire chief, but we just put $10,000 worth of brand-new sand there. Virgin, there's, it's clean. And I don't, how do we clean up all the ash and the soot and everything else?
It's a public beach for the public to use. We went before the rec committee and received approval for Grinnell's for the bonfire, same way as we've done at, at the last year. We do go back, and we check on Saturday morning, and DPW has removed the ash each year like they, they've done prior.
Well, I, I'm just going to tell you, it's $10,000 of brand-new sand, which is, you know-
For the public.
And, and-
One at a time.
We don't even have the beach open yet, so I am a little concerned about, you know, having to have that brand-new sand be, and maybe the fire chief will tell me, no, 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 it's not going to leave a lot of soot, or you're not going to have a lot of cinders or ash. I, I don't really know. But, you know, given the amount of money that we're putting into this, you know, that, that is a concern. How does, we were just saying-
Maybe DPW could get down there the day before, clear out an area of the sand where they could have the bonfire, and then, when they're done, scoop up the ash, put the sand back. That's a possibility. So, we don't have to worry about, you know, ruining the, the sand. We probably could do that. I'm sure Bill could come up with a way of doing that.
Mr. McGreevy?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted, I'm going to let Bill finish, and then I'll just finish my questions.
Okay, so my, again, not knowing where this bonfire was last year, or where a bonfire's ever been at this beach, because I've never been here, I was thinking of actually doing it, I'll point out the plan, so everyone will see.
Yeah.
I was actually going to use right here, right here, that's a possibility. I'm the actual ash pit area that I can clean up actively with, so we're not going to, but this area too is not finished with sand.
Right.
So, I still can have, I can put it down in this area. Again, I can work with the chief and figure out an area that's going to work for everybody.
That's the same spot where it's been every year, it's down at that point, near the wall.
Sit down in this area.
Down towards that pitch point, Bill. Where the water pitches down to the break wall, where it's way down, so it's there.
Low tide's at 5:30 that day, high tide's at 12:30, so you'll, they'll back it up slightly.
We're not going to find areas where it won't ruin anything down.
Okay. It would be, if that would be good. So, you know, I think community events are great, and, you know, I'm inclined to support this, but, you know, do we have a cleanup plan?
We've had the same cleanup plan since 2013, so 2013, 14, 15. We didn't have it last year, and we're back again, so walking-
I mean, I'm just, I-
So, walking Main Road after the parade, going down prior to the bonfire, going back down on early Saturday morning after the bonfire, so when it's light out and it's not dark, we'll, we'll walk the high school field at the end of the night. We'll go back down on Sunday. It's the exact same as, as 2013, and 14, and 15.
So, you know, as I said, I, I think community things are really good, and in the end, as much as I, you know, like to get the beach open before we do too much to it down there, at the same time, part of renovating Grinnell's was so that we- was so that we would have community events, and I think they're good. I will say right now, the thing, the, the two things that make me uncomfortable, and I'm just gonna say them because they do make me uncomfortable, is that it feels to me like we're getting approached about this way after all this stuff has been done, that, you know, here we are, July tenth, the events are on the twenty-eighth, and we're being asked to sponsor this, as opposed to coming to the town early on and saying, we wanted to do this year, we're not sure if we have the resources, and would you like to sponsor it? So the town could have been involved all the way along, and, and we could have done our planning and our sort of, you know, budgeting, and, and as opposed to, you know, here we are, two weeks in front of this, kind of going, okay, how much is this gonna cost? So I, I do wish that the town had been asked for the sponsorship early, and I know, Linda, that you came in front of us to give us updates along the way, and I, I completely recognize that, but the sponsorship thing didn't show up until, like, the last meeting, and it was only, well, what about the insurance? And now it's so-
We, we were pushed off on a couple of agendas, so I don't know the exact date that we originally came, but-
This has been over a month coming.
Yeah, but in all fairness, they didn't, she didn't ask for the town to sponsor it. Councilman Edwards made a motion for us to do that, so they would be covered by the insurance, and we all agreed to do that, so. She didn't really come before us and ask us that.
No, but we didn't know, but when that came up two weeks ago, the, the covering the cost of the police and fire, I mean, I just assumed that that was gonna be how they always pay for it. And the other reason I'd like to do this a little bit better next time, and frankly, not right now, I think we should have a policy, because, well, I think this is great, you know, as we maybe do more with some of the spaces, like Grinnell's, or we're able to renovate, there may be other groups that come forward and start saying, well, you know, here's our group, we're a, you know, nonprofit too, we planned an event, and we'd like you to sponsor it now, and then we're gonna find ourselves, you know, in a position where other groups will say, well, you know, you did that for Celebrate Tiverton, you sponsored their event, our group wants to do Tiverton weekends, and, you know, you should sponsor us too. So I think in the future, we should try and think about a po, a sponsorship policy and how that-
We will be dissolving the not-for-profit if this becomes a town-sponsored event, because the volunteer committee should be town-based and reporting in, and just like you said.
Right, exactly.
Um, so the, the, I mean, I'm holding on to the not-for-profit depending upon what gets decided here, on which way we're gonna go, um, do it like we've always done in the past, and, you know, hope for the best and have a spaghetti dinner, or, you know, try to, try to, you know, get up some businesses, and, you know, and, and again, whatever we can pay for, we will pay for if it's, you know, but this is to give back to the community, it's not to, to promote any other organization.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
I just want to remind everybody on the prior budget item, we just picked up six hundred dollars. We're saving about fifty bucks a, a month on electricity at the fire station, so, you know, it's not as large of a cost as, as need be. Actually, I think those savings more than cover the details from the fire department.
Madam President?
Linda, how much money have you raised so far?
Well, that's, that's another thing, because we're holding off folks that do want to donate to us, not to know where to send the checks, so they come to us, so they just come to the town. So we probably won fifteen, we're probably a little over two thousand dollars, about two thousand dollars right now, a little over twenty-one hundred bucks.
So that basically covers fire and police?
Um, but we have, you know, the outdoor movie, we have to pay the musician, so we do have some limited expenses that we do have to pick up, but we've always, you know, done our best to pay, you know, for the, for the details, and, and if there's any money left over in there, and that's the condition, that, that leftover money goes to offset the cost of whatever the additional is, then we wipe out the account each year until we can build it up. That's, that's perfectly, I mean, we're more than willing to pay for the services that the town is, is providing, but how do we sustain this? How to become transparent? How do we build community? That's kind of where we want to go, that this is a town event.
If we can raise another thousand dollars for you, that would help.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I have a question also. So when you said you, you're trying to figure out which way to go, so if, because to stay as a volunteer or to become sponsor, so if we say yes to the sponsor tonight, that would go, yes, we're gonna be sponsoring you, not just for this one, but that would be part of the-
That's something we would have to decide on.
Well, no, that's what I'm asking.
We're just sponsoring for this year.
So this one, we're just sponsoring for this year.
Yeah, but-
But then we could do it, yeah, then we could say, okay, let's just do it again, yeah.
Yeah, our, our request going forward then would be that this is a town-wide celebration, and, you know.
And that just make it part of the regular budget. Make it part of the regular-
But we would, we would still want to ask for donations and, and ask for businesses and individuals to come forward to support the event. We would still promote that piece of it, not expect that the budget-
No, because that's part of the community.
Yeah, not to expect that the budget absorbs, you know, the additional costs.
I'm just saying, just to, again, to Councilor Edwards, it's just a matter of trying to plan, that is what we're really trying to do here, and just put it up front. And it's just like, okay, we really like this, this was a good idea, let's get it in there. So that's, that's where my questions are coming from. Okay.
Madam President, I have a question. What do we do with Pardon Gray? Is that a town sanctioned event?
They're private.
That's a, the trust, the-
Land trust.
Land trust. So that's their property, their event. So that's not a town event. How does recreation feel about this? You've given your okay?
Yeah, they, they came to us, and we weren't sure what was going on with Grinnell's, and, you know, it was, they wanted to do the bonfire the same as they had done the previous years. We weren't sure if Grinnell's was even gonna be available, the bridge abutment project up in the air, the refurbishment of the beach up in the air, so we gave them our blessing. Of course, it's the, the council's ultimate decision, we're just an advisory board, but we gave our blessing to use either fogland or Grinnell's Beach, and, and we did fogland at that meeting, gave them permission for fogland, just in case Grinnell's was just completely unavailable. So, but, you know, anything that can, can bring together the townspeople to, to celebrate instead of fight over something, well, I think Recreation Commission will always be for, so.
Thank you, John.
And just as a note with regards to fogland, we did discuss fogland as well. The area down there, there's no lighting, it's, you know, quite a windy, windy road at night, especially with the bonfire and whatnot, security and kids coming out of their cars and crossing that road. We just didn't feel comfortable with the location in, in the evening.
And Grinnell's is more central, it's up.
Yeah, true.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I feel like we've belabored this far too long, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this as a town event.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion, any questions? Are we all set? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Ananamous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Financial business, F1, Town Administrator, ratification of amendment to contract for Fire Chief Lloyd for two percent salary increase effective April twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, for a year two of the contract impact statement posted. Ms. McGreevy?
Yes, thank you. As we discussed last week, as we debriefed Chief Lloyd and his performance review, I felt it was appropriate to provide a standard two percent raise.
Two percent?
Two percent.
Yeah. Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Motion to authorize Town Administrator to ratify the amendment to the contract for the fire chief for a two percent salary increase effective April twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Ananamous. F2, Town Administrator, ratification of amendment to contract with Tony Lynn McGowan, tax collector for two percent salary increase effective June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, for year three of the contract impact statement posted. Mr. McGreevy?
Thank you. Her contract year ended actually with the fiscal year, so it's a convenient one. But I obviously wasn't here to do or to be able to observe her, her performance over the last year, but the town clerk was, and I've had a long conversation with her, as well as a, a, a performance review with, with the tax collector, and her, the, the performance has been superb over this year, and so recommend a standard two percent raise.
Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Make a motion to authorize Town Administrator to ratify the amendment of contract for Tony Lynn McGowan, tax collector, two percent salary increase effective June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, for three, year three of the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Ananamous. New business, G1, Town Administrator, request, request approval of contracts for Rhode Island Community Development Block Grant Award for June twenty-seventeen to March thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, totaling a hundred and twenty thousand. We have a contract agreement and a contract agreement with Church Community Housing Corp. and Newport Renewables. Ms. McGreevy?
Yes, we have had an ongoing relationship with Church Community, being our facilitator of our community block grants, and we have representative to speak on behalf of these, these two amendments to the contract.
Good evening. My name is, my name is Sam Schuford with Church Community Housing. Church Community Housing, since I believe the late nineteen-eighties, has provided assistance to the town with their community development block grant applications. And so the, back in May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, the town council approved the two thousand and sixteen application, and this one project, the, the Apple Creek, a hundred and twenty thousand for a solar array on top of that development, is actually the only two thousand and sixteen, I guess, award that I know that has been announced or, um, in the entire state of Rhode Island, so that's sort of why it's a little bit of an unusual situation. There are funds associated with this project that are, have been opened since, I believe, two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen, so they're pretty old, and, so that's sort of why this was announced pre any other awards that I know of in the state. So the project is to install a sixty-one point two kilowatt photovoltaic solar array on top of Apple Creek Apartments, which is off of Wood, Woodward, I should know this, um, off of Windwood Drive in Tiverton. So that has a, it's a twenty-eight unit apartment complex, there are currently fifty-eight individuals living there, and forty-four of them are low and moderate income. So the array is estimated to produce seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twelve kilowatt-hours per year, and this would be approximately eleven thousand dollars per year annual utility savings for the development.
How much? Could you repeat that, please?
Eleven thousand dollars per year.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Solicitor, any issues with the contract?
No, you know, the key to this contract to me is there is a limitation on liability for the state and the town, which is really what I'm looking for. Other than that, it's a standard contract for matters of this nature. I think the town's protected under it.
Very good.
Thank you. I do have questions, like, this is the CDBG-
Correct.
-grant program.
Mm-hmm.
Now, normally, every year, you come back with a, like, a list of, these are the projects, and we have to have a public hearing on it, and so forth. Did something change in the process that that was not followed?
The, typically, the town council approves whoever is the town administrator at the time, and at that time, it was Matthew Wojcik. So I think with the, the transition, I think it's a probably a good idea to just put this forward, and, but typically, the, the town, during all of those public hearings, and then the, there's an authorizing resolution that goes along with these funds, and they typically authorize the, the town administrator to sort of sign a contract with the state and to move forward with any additional CDBG-related activities for that grant year.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. McGreevy?
Yeah, that, so where I picked up the ball with this is knowing that you had approved in a previous council the application process, this contract came for a signature, of which I really had no, I guess, auditrail to say, okay, what's the basis of the contract? So after discussion with the solicitor, it sounded, the, the contract itself sounded good, but it seemed like a good idea to bring it to you all for one last look at it, because we're obligating, you know, we're, we're, drawing upon these funds, which are, funds which are use or lose through this program.
Actually, my, my memory of it was that the council had had a public hearing, and this was one of the projects that had been approved, and the CDBG money came through for this. Now we have the contract, and that's when I had a discussion with Mr. McGreevy.
Okay, so this was, this was part of the twenty-sixteen-
Correct.
Uh, grant process?
Correct.
Okay, so is there any twenty-seventeen process? Is that, so maybe that's where I'm getting confused.
Well, the application period, as I recall our conversation, we actually haven't, we haven't seen the application period open up for seventeen, correct?
That's correct.
And so the logic was, well, at some point, if it does, and it's quite possible that, given funding cuts at the federal level, it may dry up entirely, we have to come back to the board to just get approval to do the application. If there is money in seventeen, sometime in eighteen, one presumes that that money would start to flow.
Madam, Madam President, if I may?
This, this is John.
I think the previous procedure was that, once the council had the public hearing and approved the application for the projects, when those contracts would come in, if the money was approved, it would not come back to the town council. It would be signed by the town administrator. I, I just think it's important for the council to see the contract itself, to know that the grant was approved, and that a contract is to be let, so that you can approve the contract too. So it's a two, two-step process. That's my recommendation for the town administrator. I think it's more appropriate than what was done previously.
And I, given that it wasn't new, I mean, it is a contract that has not been seen by, you know, this administrator before, it's probably a policy that I'll want to continue, just so there's the absolute clarity of money being applied for, not all the money gets awarded, and not all of it gets the chance to be spent in the same year that it comes in.
Yes, Mr. Ms. Mello?
The council approved the application and removed and put other items in for what they felt was the important things to apply for. But am I correct in understanding you that this was pre-approved because funds were available for this project? But there could be more approval from what we sent our application in for.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's just hasn't come through yet. And that's when the council would see it again. You'd see that contract, I mean, in the past, this is what we've done. You'd see that award, and it would say, well, okay, you applied for fifty thousand for administration, but you only got twenty thousand. You applied for this, and this wasn't accepted, but the streetscape might have been, or whatever it was from our application. So we haven't seen that part, because it just hasn't come out yet.
Right, the, these are very much boiler, boilerplate contracts that each city and town in Rhode Island receives that does accept CDBG awards, does sign, and then that exact contract is then carried down to what is called the sub-reception. So that's the, the nonprofit or the organization that comes in to the town requesting money through the CDBG application.
Just as a final note, if I may, in our sort of all, overall grant policy, it's sort of, different grants have different rules to them from the point of view of what's presented to you all. What I'm trying to do here is create a policy that a grant isn't applied for unless you approve it, and then depending on the money coming in and the contract, they're all gonna be different. They're gonna have different tails to them, different requirements, and I'd like to get the council in the habit of expecting to see an application and then a contract, maybe part of the money, maybe not all of the money. So- So that's really the reason, you know, this is coming forward to you in this way.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the council? Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Motion to, I guess, to grant the town administrator approval to sign the contracts for the Rhode Island Community Development Block Grant Award for June 2017 to March 31st, 2018, totaling $120,000. Is that going to encompass A and B?
I would, yes, I would just mention in your motion that that is for A and B.
For G1, A and B.
Motion's been made in second, I'll just explain why I will vote against this, this is HUD money, correct?
No, it's correct.
I will be voting against it. All those in favor of the motion? Oh, sorry. I'm not voting for it. Sorry. One, two, three, five, and one opposed. Thank you. I know, I get used to just putting up my hand. Thank you, Mr. Schuford. G2, Town Administrator, discussion and possible vote on opening Grinnell's Beach.
Yes, so, construction work down on the beach is going very well, we've talked about the new sand and the new parking lot, we expect that it'll be done by the end of this week, and given that, you know, the beach season, the summer season is not, you know, depending on where you started, it may or not even be half over, we gathered and said this might be a good idea to, to open the beach at some point after the end of this week. We've got to look at staffing, we've got to look at just the exact, the condition of the facilities, and come up with a particular plan to open it, but we wanted to come forward to the council to see if we can get permission to look towards that. And Councilor Hilton has certainly been very much involved in this, and she may certainly have something to add.
I do, because one of the things that we discussed, or the prior council discussed with the Grinnell's Beach Committee, was the beach fees. And the beach, the beach fees, the beach fees, is that better, John?
Yeah.
Was the beach fees, and that, you know, and part of the reason frankly, for the interest in reopening the beach, even though the project is not completely done, is that some of the people going to the beach right now are very disrespectful of it, and in large part, it's because no one's watching them, nor is anybody charging anything, so it's now become sort of a local free beach, which isn't really a great situation. So if, if the recreation coordinator can find staff, and he thinks that that is possible, and we can get some swimming ropes, because I guess last year's got pitched, because they'd had it, and Bill's guys finish up, we could open the beach parking lot, staff the beach with a lifeguard, staff the parking lot with attendants, we'd have to leave the porta-potties down there, and then we would cordon off with fence the bathhouse and the gas station site, so that the DPW could continue to work on that. But the council, and this is on for a public hearing, we voted in the consent agenda for the 24th. One of the big pieces about this is what we're going to charge out-of-state residents who come to visit the beach. And that's going to be a big part of the decision in opening the beach.
So... You're saying we won't be opening the beach until after the meeting of the 24th?
Well, I don't think, I mean, we'd have to get, we're working on getting staff, and, or the recreation coordinator is, and we have to order some swim floats, because they aren't there. But it doesn't really make a tremendous amount of sense to open the beach for a week and then potentially change the rates. It makes sense to set whatever the rates are going to be for out-of-state visitors to the beach once going forward, and have it be done for the rest of the summer.
I think from the point of view, that physically, the beach will be available, unless there's some unforeseen circumstance with the construction, it will be available for opening sometime next week.
But we don't necessarily have the staff on board for next week yet.
That's correct.
So, so I'm getting two stories here, I'm hearing next week, and then I'm hearing the 24th.
Well, I think, I, I think you've noticed there's not a date in there, and so we're not asking for a specific date, I think what we're asking for is, or I know what we're asking for, is permission to open the beach.
When ready.
When ready. Assuming that we have the staff, we have the-
I think the-
Everything ready to go.
The big issue is going to be lifeguard, and the line around, that's, that's one of the biggest issues, finding that line. Seems like we can't locate who supplied it.
I found it today.
Oh, did you? Okay, so.
You talking about the, the safety line?
Yes.
Is that the DPW, near the, near the house, near the hut for the sand trap?
No, we put it in Fogland's, the other one they threw away, because it was no good, so we need a new one. We don't know who the vendor is, or we didn't know.
Yeah, I think we can get one for about $1,300 bucks, $1,400 bucks, all made up right now. That's what was, we searched around at pricing, one of those, and never, never, never did auto, wanted to try to get by with what we had.
However, before you swallow on that price, you know, the beaches are moneymakers. Anecdotally, I don't know, maybe one of the committee members has the actual data, but during the holiday weekend, on Monday and Tuesday, they took in, at Fogland's, $2,000 a day, and that was at the existing price, fee.
Fogland, I believe the fees, sorry to interrupt, I believe the fees at Fogland are different from Grinnell's.
They are.
I don't have them with me, I don't know if anybody dug that up.
They are.
So, and we had anticipating, recommending, once the beach was finished, the commission has been sitting back waiting, and we've been, you know, knowing that we, we were going to discuss beach fees and an increase for Grinnell's Beach, once it was refurbished.
It is right now the least expensive beach.
Wednesday. It's on the agenda.
Not just in Tiverton and Little Compton, but sort of in the Fall River metropolitan area, Grinnell's is the least expensive beach right now.
So, can you just tell me, what's the fee, and is it, is it for parking? Just parking?
It was $5 a day during the week, $10 on a weekend day.
For parking?
And a holiday, yes.
But if you walk there-
Nothing, you don't pay any-
Right, you can walk on, right, and, but we can't charge if we're not staffing it with a lifeguard.
Right, exactly.
And are we looking at that original footprint of the swim area, as we did, or are we expanding that? Because I don't want to spend $1,300 on a 600-foot wide float-
That, that's your call.
And then back down the road, what?
That's recreation's call.
Okay, all right, because I thought that was part of the plan of refurbishment, it was expanding the swim area.
You'll have to look at that.
But we were going to have to, in order to do that, we need to, you know, check with the state, make sure we're not going to need additional lifeguards, if we go larger-
To be honest, John, in the, in the Grinnell's Beach part of this, we were expanding the beach area, the swim area was yours, we never, there's nothing in there in the plan about making the swim area any bigger.
All right, so we'll call, I'll call it, you're expanding the sunbathing area.
The sunbathing area is getting larger.
Okay, all right.
Madam President?
Just keep in mind, though, before we open, it's more than just staff, we've got to get the line, we've got to get the lifeguard chair down there, make sure it's in okay shape, if the building is, if the little shack has been torn down?
It hasn't, yeah.
It hasn't? Okay, we need to keep that up until the end of the beach season. But if this council wants that beach open, we'll try our hardest to get it open, you know, it might not be for July, but maybe we can, you know, if we shoot for sometime in July, maybe we can actually have it happen by August 1st, and have it, have maybe a month of, of the beach open, collecting fees.
Right, but what the council will also need to do is discuss at this, based on your recommendation, I guess, at the hearing on the 24th, what, and we're, we're going to vote on that, what, if we do open Grinnell's, what the fee will be for parking in Grinnell's.
So the 24th, you're, you have it on your, on your agenda to address fees overall in town, or Grinnell's?
Beach fees, right, beach fees.
Beach fees? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, because it is on my agenda.
It's not specific on the agenda.
Yes.
It's just a fee, amendments to the fee resolution, so that could be any fee.
That could be any fee, or only one fee, or all fees, so you're covered, right?
As a matter of fact, we've asked for any fees throughout the town government, but we may or may not have time to get them all.
Landfill should be on there.
The advertisement will indicate which fees, which department's fees, when the ad goes out, we'll say, recreation, DPW, planning, and any others that come forward.
Okay, when, when are you going to put the advertisement out for a public hearing?
I'm going to have to put it out this, this week's kind of times, if you want, toward the 24th.
And do you have to list the new fees in the advertisement, or just the discussion?
You don't have to list the fees, you just have to say which fees you could aim in.
You're going to discuss?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Generalize, and so far, I do have DPW planning.
And it is on my agenda for Wednesday, I have a meeting Wednesday, it's on my agenda to discuss, to discuss beach fees, and I have a few ideas, I don't know if the council's going to like all of them, but I have a idea of, well, I'll have my meeting, and then I'll talk to you folks.
Madam President? John, if we over, we can't, we just got to be aware that we don't overcharge, because we don't want people coming to the beach and then just trying to find a place to park.
Right, right, and we, and we tried to, we, you know, a year or so ago, we did increase the fees at Grinnell's Beach, and people just stopped coming. They waited until we closed the gate, and then they, until the guard shack got locked, and then they came.
Yeah, so.
So we've got to, I know, you know, we tried, we were, some, some, some folks were in there thinking, hey, we're the first beach on the way south, people will stop there first, they drove right by.
Yeah.
I can go to, I can go to South Shore for 12 bucks during the week, I'm not going to pay 15 to go to Grinnell's.
Correct, and, and we're going to lose a lot of parking, the lot's a lot smaller.
Right, but there is one way of, you know, I mean, if we went, if we turn that to, that parking lot to a parking lot by permit only, we could charge everybody.
Yeah.
Not just non-residents.
Everybody, meaning you charge the town, you're talking about charging town residents?
Yes, but keep in mind, you're talking to someone who's been on a commission that's been chopped and chopped and chopped and chopped, can barely, can barely cut the grass, so, yeah, I would be open. And, you know, you get what you pay for, when you have year after year of 0%, 0.9%, things are going to get paid for somehow, so I have no problem proposing it, I don't mind if people get mad at me. My father-in-law will be the maddest.
Yeah, nothing wrong with a couple of bucks, so.
Yeah, and then, you know, when people come from Warwick or Cranston or, guess what? We, we made a deal with the state, we charge out-of-town Rhode Island residents the same as we do town residents, you know, if we had a town, you know, beach sticker for Grinnell's for, for $10, and at least we can, even if they're coming for the day, hey, sorry, you need the sticker, this yearly pass for $10.
Yeah, right.
John, I'm just trying to throw crap against the wall and see what sticks, but we can, we can definitely discuss a fee structure for Grinnell's Beach, and if, and if the council as a whole feels that we're trying to get too much, and we're not actually going to get people to come to the beach, you can, you can adjust our recommendation.
That's what the public hearing is for.
Yeah.
So, thank you, John. It's like, for a motion for this, we'd have to put so many qualifiers on it. Should we vote to close the beach?
No.
Can I add one, just one thing, so the council's aware, that by the end of August, third to fourth week in August, that maybe the parking lot may be closed anyway for Stone Bridge construction, so I just want to make sure everyone's seeing, it might be for one month that that parking lot's open, just so everyone's aware.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I personally think that, you know, if the beach is a moneymaker, and we have the opportunity to make a couple of bucks, given our budget, we should definitely do it, but I just want to, just think about one of the prior items that we had, and that there was some consternation from some members of the council about actually holding an event at the beach, and yet here we are, talking about opening the beach, that's just my two cents.
Well, the other thing that I need to ask is, did we budget for the Grinnell's Beach to be open this year?
Not full, so there's going to be a budget adjustment, administrator's, to work out.
Madam, Madam President?
Ms. Hilton?
You know, John, I, I, you know, I'm not sure I understood your comment, to tell you the truth. I raised the concern about a big fire on $10,000 worth of brand-new sand, and I'm not sure with it, was there a point to the comment that you just made about, you know, other than just to try and take a poke at me, because I'm not sure what was the point?
I'm not inclined to respond to that.
Okay. I'm going to point out one other reason why we've discussed pushing up the opening of this beach, and that is, for those of us who are going down there every day and cleaning the beach up, and there are a number of us who are doing this, because we're not charging to go to the beach, because there's no lifeguard there, because there's no gatekeeper, you know, the, the, all this work that we're doing down there requires a daily cleanup, because there's nobody down there to supervise the people who are there. They're finding places to park, they're wedging themselves into that little parking lot, they're parking along Main Road, they're parking at the doctor's office, wherever they're going, and, you know, one upside to getting the beach open, in addition to some extra revenue, and we will only do this if we have the staff and we can afford to do it, is that instead of seeing all this nice work that we're doing down there be abused by people who are showing up who don't care, having the beach open, having a gate attendant, having the police do a patrol plan and come through, and be paying attention to what goes down there, helps to protect the half a million dollars we're investing in fixing this place up. So there is another ancillary advantage to having this, because it means there'll be people down there who work for the town who are watching it.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton, I think we need to make sure that we have budget money for it, because we have to pay lifeguards, right? I don't believe that was in the budget for this year, and so I leave it up to the town administrator to make recommendation for that. I don't believe that you're going to be opening it before June 24th, so I would recommend that we continue this item until then, when we can get some information on what budgetary dollars this will cost.